We're going to get started. One moment, she's going to go live with.
Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person on City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the November 15th meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabavariano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreter. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 1st, 2023 School Committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
Some vote.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair Robinson, and good evening to everyone in the audience, virtually and physically. I'd like to start my superintendent's report by encouraging our families to participate in school preview time. This is for the upcoming 2024-2025 school year. School preview time is an annual opportunity for families to visit the Boston Public Schools' schools and learn more about what makes our school community so special. We encourage families to visit, discover BPS on our website, where parents and caregivers can add their address and the grade that they're looking to explore to get their list of schools. We also suggest and welcome them to our school buildings to meet our school leaders and their staff in in-person school information sessions. For families that cannot make it in person, schools are also holding virtual information sessions. Both in-person and online sessions are being held this month and throughout December and January. All of this information can be found at www.bostonpublicschools.org backslash lowercase schoolpreview. Another great opportunity to meet school leaders and their staff and learn about schools is at the annual BPS Showcase of Schools. This is an event that will happen on Saturday, December 2nd, here at the Bowling Building, from 9 until 1:00 p.m. Pre-registration is not required. I personally have always loved the school showcase. It really allows our families a chance to learn about all of the great things that are happening in our schools and all of the things that our schools have to offer students and families. So you'll see things like programs, leadership and school culture in one place with everyone interacting. Families can learn more about specific schools, get answers to their registration questions, and meet school leaders, staff, and students from all of our schools. I hope to see and meet our families there on Saturday, December 2nd. For families needing transportation to the showcase, we will have free BPS bus pickup and drop-off from Brighton, East Boston, South Boston, Hyde Park, Charleston, and Matapan, and other locations to the Bowling Building. BPS family liaisons will make the information available to school communities, and we will share it out in every possible way: social media, flyers, robocalls, and certainly on the BPS website. I'd also like to highlight a few other key dates that are on our website. Priority registration for K-0, K-1, grades 6, 7, and 9 will be held January 4th through February 9th. Priority registration for K-2 and all other grades will be held February 12th and April 5th. We also know that the process can be unfamiliar. It can be overwhelming to some of our families. So in addition to all of the information on the websites, if you have any questions, you can always call our Welcome Center at 617-635-9010, or you can email welcomeservices@bostonpublicschools.org. So lots of different ways to get information. I also want to note that this time of year marks the start of the BPS budget season. The release of school budgets is currently on track for the second week of December. My team and I have been meeting regularly to plan for the FY25 budget. We know we must continue the work that we did last year to transition Essor dollars to the general fund where appropriate. The finance team is working on the long-term sustainability of our investments that is supporting the outcomes we want for our students. The work we did last year to begin this transition was critical, and this year, we're focused on looking at what we are currently funding in addition to any new proposals to make sure the investments for FY25 are aligned with our key priorities. The FY25 budget must be a budget that builds a solid foundation for all the work we have to do to close opportunity and achievement gaps, deliver on the Inclusive Ed Plan, and create the types of physical spaces that our students deserve to help them learn and grow. We must be strategic in how we prioritize where our resources go, especially as we prepare for the upcoming fiscal landscape. We'll continue to keep our most vulnerable students, especially our Black and Brown students, students with disabilities, and our multilingual learners with and without disabilities at the center of all of our decision-making throughout the budget process. We look forward to coming back to the School Committee on December 13th, when the BPS budget team will provide a broader financial update, which will include information on Essor and share our FY25 priorities as well as updated enrollment data. A few bright spots, there were many over the last weeks. Last night, I attended the BDF, the Boston Education Fund's inaugural fundraiser. This was organized to recognize and celebrate and really appreciate the efforts of our educators. The event was held to support Equity Boston, which is the initiative dedicated to advancing educational equity in Boston. And what I really love about the new vision of BDF is that the community actually has voice in how some of the money that's fundraised is spent. I was honored to speak at the event and give special recognition alongside BTU President Tang and BDF Executive Director Pam Leans to the 2023 Educators of the Year. And I look forward to celebrating them and all of their accomplishments at the next School Committee meeting on December 6th, and we'll introduce them to you. Last week, on November 8th, East Boston High School was awarded the Ed Vestas $100,000 School on the Move Prize. The prize recognized the schools, the leaders, the teachers who create and continuously improve learning environments where all students can thrive. I'm especially proud of school leader Phil Branch-40, his team for their incredible work. East Boston High School is one of the district's largest secondary schools. It serves majority Latinx student body from the surrounding neighborhoods. At one point, actually, when I was here as the network supervisor for the high schools, right before I left, Phil was one of my last principal appointments. At that time, East Boston was on the brink of state takeover. They had been, and since then, they were in the 3 percentile at the time. Since then, they've been recognized for their efforts to strengthen instruction, and certainly, they've done it with a strategy of implementing graduate-level PD for teachers, an equitable grading policy after school, and summer credit recovery programs. Their graduation rate has gone up, their dropout rate has gone down, their state ranking and attendance have all improved tremendously. And if you ever set foot in that school, you can tangibly feel the school's spirit and culture. So congratulations to Phil and to his team, to the entire East Boston High community. I also want to mention, it was also happened to be two other high schools or secondary schools who are the runners-up: Boston Green Academy and school leader Matt Holzer, and Fenway High School and school leader Jeff Walker, and tremendous achievements in both of those schools. Their communities received $20,000, which is double the usual amount, thanks to a generous anonymous donor. So just congratulations to both BGA, Fenway, and especially to East Boston High School. I also want to take a moment to congratulate Fenway High School librarian Bonnie McBride on receiving the 2023 Massachusetts Super Librarian Award from the Massachusetts School Library Association. This award recognizes exemplary school librarians across the state who have distinguished themselves through library programs that enhance student learning and contribute to improving school libraries through PD, leadership, service, and advocacy. Our young people get a constant flow of information from so many different sources. It can be difficult to navigate that information and separate fact from opinion and outright, sometimes, fiction. I think it's challenging for us adults as well. Our librarians are a valuable resource for our students as they learn the difference. So congratulations to Bonnie. Thank you for all you do. I also want to make note that former Superintendent Brenda Casilius was also given an award by Mass Association of Libraries as being a champion for the libraries. Under her leadership, we began that deep investment in libraries. So congratulations to Dr. Casilius as well. Legendary Trotter Elementary School teacher Alma Wright, everybody knows Alma. She was honored by action for Boston Community Development last week with the organization's Community Hero Award, and she certainly deserves that. Although retired, Ms. Wright was a BPS teacher for 56 years, 51 of them at the Trotter. So congratulations to her on a well-deserved recognition. She still volunteers in the school. You still run into her when you go there just for her many decades of dedication and love. On Monday, I had the pleasure of meeting with a group. I've been meeting with different community groups throughout the city as part of this second year for me. This was a group of African-American leaders who are community partners in supporting our Black and Brown students through an array of programming and providing lots of opportunities for our youth. You know, really, it was wonderful to be able to talk with those who are actually doing the work with us, to be able to hear their suggestions, areas that we could get stronger, or areas they'd like to explore. And so I really enjoyed it and will continue to report out as I meet with different areas and different communities of our city. I'd like to end tonight with some good news from BPS Athletics. O'Brien and English won their respective divisions of the Boston City Cheerleading Championship. Boston International Boys Soccer advanced to the Division V MIAA Final Four. Unfortunately, they lost 2-0 last night versus Westport, but we're very proud of how far their hard work took them. And just an open invitation, hopefully, you're able to attend one of many exciting Thanksgiving football matchups that will happen next week. Brighton versus East Tech-Boston is Tuesday, November 21st, 5:00 p.m. at Fenway Park. Boston Latin School versus English, Thursday, November 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. at Harvard Stadium in Cambridge. Latin Academy versus O'Brien, Thursday, November 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. at Madison Park. And Excel versus East Boston, Thursday, November 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. at East Boston Stadium. So lots of opportunities there to go out and celebrate and support our football and our cheerleaders. This concludes my report. I turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. Anyone with questions? No questions? Mr. O'Neill?
I just want to echo the superintendent's praise for East Boston High School and Fenway High School and Green Academy. All of them, we see remarkable work going on. I love the fact that Ed Vestas focused on three high schools, and their selection committee ended up picking three high schools this year. For folks who say to us, "Well, you know, our children are a consecutive exam school. Where else could they possibly go?" We have some great high schools in this city beyond our exam schools, and I love that have things going on that are really pretty impressive. And I love that Ed Vestas, thank you to Ed Vestas for the work that they do on the School on the Move Committee. I made up a number of people who give money to Ed Vestas, who's such a partner of ours, but they go out and visit the schools, spend a tremendous amount of time to pick this winner. So it's an excellent event, and in particular, thanks to East Boston. As you said, Superintendent, when you walk in that school, you know something's going on. And what I love is the camaraderie and the collaboration between all the schools at East Boston working together. So the elementary schools with the high school, and the fact that many, many more folks are choosing to send their youth to East Boston High School is a testament to that collaboration going on, and it's pretty exciting to see.
I just wanted to, again, congratulate the Ed Vestas winners, but also wanted to share that last week, Mr. O'Neill and I went to visit the McCormick after the testimony of a couple of folks here. I have to say that what we were extraordinarily pleased with was the reception of the staff and the students and what they are doing to create, to continue to make the school work, which was, what was very sad, was to see the condition of a building, to listen to young people who were sixth graders in the school when the promise of a new building was made and are sitting in a school that has a lovely library, but it looks like it's the library of an elementary school, certainly not the library for a high school. You can't get a whole class in there because it's small. They make the best of it. Two rooms have been redone in the school, and when they walk into those rooms, it's a whole different sense of being. To have environments that our kids are proud of and want to be in is critically important. And these young women that we talked to were very elegant in their reflection and their description of the way that being in this building makes them feel and being in those new spaces makes them feel. And they question what is wrong with them that the district did not keep their promise. So I know Mr. O'Neill joins me in saying that both of us were on this committee and felt we were told things that encouraged us to vote for this merger and plan that have not come to fruition. And as we get ready to launch this bigger endeavor, being truthful, being honest, and making sure that whatever we promised, we're going to deliver irregardless of changes of leadership at the city level, at the district level. We can't afford to continue to do that to our kids. And so we have made a promise that we are going to continue to work with the school and monitor with the school and the list that they have shared with the city and with the district. And it's modest in terms of what they're asking versus what they really should be asking or should have been promised. But as we begin this work tonight, it's just so critical to hear that we're about to start discussions seriously of what's going to happen to 120 communities over the next number of years, but to make sure that what we are talking about are things that we critically mean that we are going to deliver on in spite of changes that may happen. We all understand that. But to be truthful, I guess that's all I want to say. We just need to be truthful. Before I close out, is there anybody else with any comment for this evening?
I have two, if that's okay. One, congratulations, obviously, to the School on the Move, and such an exciting day. It was so good to be there. And all of the other highlights that you shared today. I have two, and I was writing, and now I lost my tab, so we're going to do it from memory. First question is just around this discovery process that families get to go through as they're searching for new schools. We've talked a lot here about making a process that's accessible, where information is given to families, where people can really make an informed choice. I think we are very far away from that, but I'm curious. Is there any shift in thinking there? Is that something we're going to be talking about as we move into budget season around a real investment around informed choice? And then, more specifically, I'm always thinking about like a tool sort of exists, like Boston School Finder. That's what I used when I moved to Boston to try to find information for my own son. Is there a way to, I don't know, build partnerships so we're informing the information in a much more strategic way that's there? Like, I don't know if we have to reinvent the wheel. We have great nonprofit partners who have been doing that work. I just want us to be accelerating. It will be another year in the choice season where families won't have real, high-quality information around what school offerings and school programs are.
So, Chair, so I think there's a couple of things there. I think one is, yes, we're looking to make the tool more robust in terms of the information that's accessible. I think we've also looked at where there's been, where in transition grades, families are really looking for the information. So for instance, at the secondary level, the Secondary Office is working on school profiles with the schools to be able to present their school and everything that's about it in a way that doesn't currently exist. And so that the, I actually was talking with the Secondary Office earlier today, so that will impact this upcoming season. I also think we're interested in creating deeper tools. So for instance, in terms of virtual tours, really being able to see from a student perspective what's special about the school, being able to see what the school looks like if a person can't actually visit it. So we're looking right now at some potential community partnerships in areas where they have expertise to be able to do that. It's very much about marketing and making sure that we're getting the right information to families as they're trying to make that transition or access. So there'll be a lot more to come on this as we get deeper into the season. But that feedback from last year was helpful, and we've definitely taken it to action.
Yeah, and even if we're thinking about it as like a multi-phase strategy, I hate like, you know, not moving with speed because we're looking for something exceptional, like, you know, VR tours or something.
Exactly.
You know, like, we, as a parent, I want to know how many AP courses a school has. I want to know what languages are offered. I want to know the culture of a school and how many fights have happened at that school. Like, there's some basic information. And then, of course, I want to be able to tour a school and do all of those things in a 21st century way. But like, there's some real basic information that's very difficult for families to get access to.
No, absolutely, and I think, I think, you know, in part, we've, particularly, like, I'll just speak on the secondary level, but there's an incredible amount of early college work, you know, career connections work, and I think it has to be reflected in a different way that just hasn't been updated. So after you made the comments, actually, last year, we started on that. And so it's, the team has been working on it. In terms of things like the VR, I think that's, I mean, that is not too far away, right? Like, we should be able to do that. So that's exactly, it's parts of the conversations that are happening now. I also think, just in general, our website, we're looking to overhaul and make it a lot more user-friendly, family-friendly.
Perfect. That's really helpful. Last question will be about exam schools as I continue to raise concerns. I appreciated the memo last week. I'm sorry I wasn't here for the discussion. As I looked at the data, you know, I will continue to push for either us reconsidering what the 10 points are and what they mean, or even, more specifically, to localize those 10 points and to move into an agreement with the state where we can get economic information about students who are not in our system as they apply for seats at an exam school. Because based on what I understood, we have the information about students currently in the system. We just don't have it about external applicants. So the majority of the applicant pool, we would know who gets 10 points and who doesn't. As I looked at it, and I could have been reading it wrong, it looked like, you know, over 300 students who are not economically disadvantaged but go to Title I schools got those 10 points. And so essentially, and over 100 of those are just tier seven and tier eight. So they're neighbors, they're peers with the students at those seven schools who we hear a lot about, who don't get those points. The competition just seems so off to me unless, again, like I keep saying, like, unless we're willing to have a conversation about quality giving, school quality giving you points, which I would be totally into, like, I really believe. But it just creates like a two-tiered system. It's either poor or it's not poor. And, or at this one level, and then you get points for going to a school with poor kids or you don't. And essentially, even more so are harming kids who are economically disadvantaged at schools where they are in, that are not part of that, that are part of that seven, rather. So I'm just curious, like, what's our path forward? I'm committed to, since raising this since June, like, get to a policy change, even if it's incremental. I'm glad we've moved past this, like, bruhaha of "We can't talk about this for five years," and we can start actually governing in a way, even if there are small changes year by year, to do something that feels right for families, particularly the ones who we want to impact, our poorest students in the system.
Right, so I think Chair, Vice Chair, yourself, right, have been clear that you would like us to look for a change, be it incremental. And so the team is actively doing that. I think in terms of attaching at the personal level, to your point, you know, we can do it for the students inside. We have not yet figured out a clean way to do it for the students outside. That is likely something that will take us beyond this year, but we are committed to looking at how we can do that. So it is, it is all being actively looked at. And, you know, in a future school committee, near a future school committee, we will update on what some of those recs can be. We're also looking, having some conversation with some grad schools about potentially having some resource and teams to be able to come up with some creative ways of looking at things with points, but also, I think, with the issue of the data. So I think we're trying to kind of put it all on the table to figure out what's possible.
Appreciate that, and so thank you. And I know folks across the city will appreciate that. I am hoping that as we move into enrollment season, the messaging at some of those fairs recognizes that, names that there is a possibility that this will change. And so it's like, apply particularly economically disadvantaged families because there is a possibility that there will be a different pathway for entry into these schools. And I think it also, we don't want to dissuade families in Tier Seven or Eight from applying
Correct.
from schools that are not economically disadvantaged because they've, the sort of data showed this year that their chances were
Yes.
less than stellar. So I hope that the messaging aligns to the current thinking that's happening internally as we get ready to roll down the change.
That's why we're seeing it publicly and seeing it in school committee.
Cool. Thank you.
I have a question. And this is just more for, I guess, my own edification because I have been able to speak to a few members from the Exam School Admission Task Force, as well as some folks like from BPS. I would very much love sort of a meeting of the minds of all people just to understand what happened during that process. And, you know, my understanding was, from some perspectives, simulations with the 10 points never occurred. And then I'm hearing also that they did occur. And so I think it goes back to Jerry's point, I'm sorry, Chair Robinson's point earlier around just being transparent about like what actually happened. Because, yeah, I'm, in some ways, I'm sort of stuck in a whirlwind over how things came to be, by my understanding of like the 10 points being arbitrary and not necessarily having simulated simulations to accompany it, to help the task force make a truly informed decision. That's sort of the narrative that I've been hearing. And so I just want to make sure that we are just all coming together and really, really hashing this out.
Yeah. So I think the legal office compiled from all of the notes anything that was of a comment from the committee at that time. So that's what we know kind of factually that was said. As far as like the dialogue behind the scenes between people, I wasn't, no idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think in terms of the simulations, we can get that answer pretty quickly from the team. Monica would have that information.
Good evening. We, there were a number of simulations run in June. And to my best memory, I believe we did run simulations with the 10 points. And I can share, all of those materials are on the BPS website, as well as the videos of all of the meetings. And I'm happy to share those with Liz to share out with all of the members.
That'd be helpful. Thank you. Thanks for the historical. Monica was a constant.
Thank you, Chair, and sorry to speak again, but I feel compelled after your comments about our visit to BCLA and particularly as it ties to the work in front of us. Because you and I were on the committee at the time, and the school communities were made promises. But we, as a committee, were given assurances about work that would be done if the school was merged together. Circumstances change, time change, administrations change, both City Hall and here. I don't believe any of it was intentional neglect. It was, I think, probably benign neglect is probably the way to say it. It's, my wife has always taught me assume good intention, and so. But in the meantime, these are our students in this building. The promises were made to them. And the Chair and I had such a great meeting with Regional Superintendent Roundtree and the Head of School Johnson, really, really thoughtful people. And in particular, though, the students that we met with, more just talking to in the corridor, were so thoughtful. And when they said to us, "Look at this hallway and how it's dark, and would you want to come to school? And you're not in a mood." And then they brought us, they were so enthusiastic to bring us into the new science labs. And of all the school that we toured that day, the best learning we saw going on was in those science labs. The students were engaged, they were loving it. It was bright, it was energetic, the teacher was running around, and every student was doing an experiment. And the students who brought us in turned to us and said, "See the difference?" Like, just, this is how we react, and we deserve this, and they were 100% right. And so Superintendent, I think this is a combination of long-term work that has to be done in conjunction with, you know, capital planning and with the city. Because do we ultimately need an extension out the back? Where they have an auditorium that they don't have right now? Where they have a library that's the size that they need? Where they have a band room? Where they have more bathrooms added for both faculty and staff? Where they have computer rooms? Where they have locker rooms? Yes, and there's room to do it. But short term, I think, you know, our operations folks, I can see hallways being painted. I can see lockers going in. They don't have lockers right now. The lockers in the building were for elementary school students. You can't fit a knapsack in, right? Mr. Mader will have a knapsack over there, I'm sure. He, if he was a student at the school, he wouldn't have a locker. And we just gotta, we gotta take care of that. And I think it has to be a prism that we, as a committee, view decisions when we're talking about a substantial number of changes to come in other buildings. How are we going to ensure, as the Chair said, the work and the promises outlast us, whether it's school committee members, whether it's administrations on the mayoral side or the, on the school side? So I just, I felt compelled, as the Chair did, to speak up that the visit was that impactful.
So I think, I think you've both kind of identified that. I think when you have, in a seven-year span, three mayors and five superintendents, the folks that suffer the most are the schools and the students, right? Because there's just a lot of different priorities that happen across all of those different changes of leadership. And I think the opportunity we have, and particularly tonight, is to look at information that we've never looked at before systemically as a district and as a city when it comes to our buildings. I think the starkness of our SCA, you know, you happened, you saw one building, but with, you know, the average score in the low 30s of our buildings, that's many of our buildings around the district, and that's the reality. And I think that's what the sense of urgency is to, with the Green New Deal, is to be able to get our students into buildings that are going to afford them the type of facility, physical space and opportunity that, that parents and students have identified they want. So, you know, that's why I think tonight's presentation is so important. Because it isn't about any one mayor or superintendent or school committee. It's about the system and what the long-range plan for the system is. So once that long-range plan gets adopted, which we've never really had in BPS, then that is the blueprint to be followed regardless of who's sitting in what seat at what time.
Superintendent, I hear you. The Chair, myself, all these members, we're out in buildings all the time. We have no preconceived notions about the amount of work, the lift in front of us to get all of our buildings to look as nice as Boston Arts Academy looks, right? I will say, this particularly resonated with the Chair and I because we sat here and voted on a merger of that school and knew the assurances that were made. And so as, and we're bringing this up more because of the work that we're about to become to, it just res, it resonates with us how important it is that we have that mechanism built in to make sure assurances given are actually followed through.
That's right.
I think that's why we're really pushing on this.
No, absolutely. And I, I think one of the biggest travesties of that whole situation was the fact that the juniors and seniors ended up needing to stay at Hyde Park. And, you know, understandably, the seniors had a choice of whether to come, but it wasn't like a full choice. So I think, you know, that's where it then impacts students, and that's just the worst. So our hope, I think, as a district going forward is to have a blueprint that we can all count on, we can all point to, that is a pact with the community of what needs to happen.
Thank you all. I'll now entertain a motion to receive the Superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing on the Superintendent's report is approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. As a reminder, public comment will be one hour, and anyone still wanting to testify will have a chance to do so later in the evening. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the Superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. This meeting will feature two public comment periods, with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up to virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who has not testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 21 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I remind you, you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not re-sign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the Chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you're from before you begin. We'll begin this evening with Andrew Pierre, followed by Rebecca Knight and John Mudd.
Good evening. I guess I'm a senior at Boston Latin Academy.
Excuse me, could you get right to the microphone?
Okay. I'm a senior at Boston Latin Academy, and I'm also part of the Boston Mayor's Youth Council on the Schools Committee. So tonight, I mainly wanted to address concerns of world events going on right now that are impacting students' mental health. And I feel like we should have some type of BPS-run, open discussion for students and families affected to be able to voice concerns or at least have a space to just be open about whatever they must be feeling right now in difficult times all over the world. So that's one of my main concerns. And the other one is also more of a question or like curiosity about adding curriculums to public schools. Because in my school, I have a teacher that had created her own curriculum about policy and protest. And I also know in another school of a student who alongside teachers helped to create an Asian Studies course. And I feel like this act of creating new curriculums based on what students want to know and having that be more promoted by BPS and promoted across all schools rather than just exam schools like BLA and BLS would be really helpful. So I just wanted to voice that as a concern and something that could be taken initiative for later on. That's all.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca Knight.
My name is Rebecca Knight, and I'm the parent of two BPS students, and I'm testifying tonight about the exam school policy. The data are clear. The implementation of this policy is flawed. Here's what we know. At least 29 low-income Boston students missed out on bonus points in the exam school admissions last year. Almost half the students receiving bonus points were not economically advantaged. Of the low-income students who missed out on points, only 55% were admitted. And of those 408 high-income students, 85% were admitted. The data doesn't exactly say how often bonus points were the deciding factor in admissions decisions. But considering the fact that in Tier Seven, where I live, and the minimum composite score to get into Boston Latin was 100.2, it's likely that they played a significant role. Tier Seven had the greatest number of applicants, and kids needed a score of 97.5 to get into BLA and 97.2 for OB. My daughter just barely missed the cutoff. So she's back at the Elliott this year, like many of her unlucky friends that you heard from last week. She'll try again for ninth grade, but the odds are against her. Actually, the odds are impossible. Kids in that, in Tier Seven, needed a 101.14 to get into BLS. She can't get that score. Rachel Skerritt, the former head of Boston Latin and a member of the task force who helped design the new policy, told the Boston Globe last week that district officials should consider adjusting the policy. When you have students getting upwards of 95 out of 100 and not having access to any of the exam schools, it necessitates revisiting some of the details of the policy. I read her quote with tears in my eyes because she's talking about my daughter. Skerritt went on to say that when the bonus points were envisaged, the task force had in mind that only kids who intended a smaller number of BPS schools, where the vast majority of kids are low-income, would receive them. The intent of the points is completely diluted by giving almost all the schools the points. This policy needs adjustment. Two years of data are clear. I urge you to act.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Mudd, followed by Carrie Akashian and Tony King.
Good evening. My name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and a longtime education advocate in Boston. On June 27th, 2022, 16 months ago, Mayor Wu, Jerry Robinson, and Brenda Caselli signed a systemic improvement plan that committed the city and BPS to, quote, "create and implement a comprehensive, long-term master facilities plan by December 31, 2023." Frankly, we still don't see it coming. We had hoped to see one this year. Ed specs, ed designs, and a decision-making rubric are not a master plan. Will you finally insist that we see one? Or after all the consultant contracts and community meetings, will you allow the district to proceed with specs and a rubric and then continue to consider individual proposals? I now think that's called a shortlist of proposals on an ad hoc basis. Are we just going back to where we started? I attended a rubric training session last week and found out that 48 of 71 elementary schools couldn't meet the quality standards that had been set forth. Presumably, these schools would be candidates for merger or closing. We were then asked to make investment decisions on schools of a region based on certain criteria, like investing in larger schools or the most, schools serving the most marginalized. But to what end? Am I?
20 seconds.
Oh. We'd have no enrollment data. There is, there is impossible to do real planning without enrollment data. People don't want to go through exercises on abstract rubric. People want to see concrete plans for their schools and their neighborhoods. The DLR group has the data to do this. If we want to involve communities, let's really do it right this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carrie Akashian.
Hi, my name is Carrie Akashian, and I live in the North End. I'm here to discuss the unfair exam school policy, and thank you for having me again. BPS, under your leadership, is knowingly giving bonus points to students who are not low-income. In the November 1st memo, the 10 bonus points are not explained, and task force members themselves have admitted the numbers are arbitrary. No, I don't want you to write an additional memo. I'm begging you to use the data we have now on the tiers that exclude students and make it right so they can attend now or next year at the latest. I'm begging you to think about what you would do if your child was in a tier that was specifically excluded with firm facts showing the exclusion, like getting 100.2 to get in. It's impossible. Like, it, you, you have to do something about it. You have to do something about it. You have the power to do it and the data now. Please act now. Please create a path forward and as quickly as possible. And I'm willing to offer my help. I've applied for the school. I've applied for the school committee before, but I'm willing to offer my free help in support of this. And a lot of us are, and you have to do something. You have to do something. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tony King, followed by Courtney Feeley-Carp and Roy Carp.
Good evening, my name is Tony King. I'm a principal in the Boston Public Schools. I'm at Boston International Newcomers Academy. I needed to be here tonight because we have a grant for approval, but I saw the opportunity to sign up for public statement, so here I am. I'm here to invite you to visit our school. I'm the proud principal of Binka. We're on the Dorchester-Mattapan line. We have five hundred, a little over five hundred high school students who are all English learners. We, this year, have forty-one different countries represented in the school and we have amazing things happening every day. At Binka, our students and our families are supported by some of the most skilled and dedicated educators in the Boston Public Schools. We're proud that sixty-five percent of our educators are either first or second-generation immigrants themselves and that eighty-five percent of us are bilingual to serve the students and the families. And we are also especially happy this year that we have six Binka graduates on our team as staff. I know we've had the opportunity to have Vice Chair O'Neill at the school a few times and I wanted to make sure that every school committee member was invited to our school. I also wanted to say, just as a person who watches school committee, I know you wonder probably sometimes, is anyone watching? So there's people watching. And I'm, I'm one of the people watching at home and I just want to say, thank you for your work. It looks pretty tough sometimes when I'm sitting at home getting ready to maybe watch Survivor after school committee and knowing that you're still gonna be here. I just want to say I appreciate the work because sometimes it looks like sitting up there feels like a lot coming at you and I appreciate the optimism that you continue to bring to the work. And I know that tough stuff is coming. I saw on the agenda tonight is the facilities planning and I'm really optimistic that there's a data-informed framework to help do the work this time and help explain it to folks. And I, you know, wish you the best in this work that's, that's coming your way, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Courtney Feeley-Carp.
Well, that's a hard positive act to follow. First of all, thank you for having a public comment tonight. My name is Courtney Feeley-Carp. I'm a parent of a Henderson Inclusion School fourth grader, although we live in Roslendale. I'm here tonight, first of all, to say, as you know, many of us were here this past spring to talk about the challenges at our school and we do appreciate the superintendent providing support. I did not expect to spend most of my summer in meetings with BPS staff, but here we are. And I do want to thank you. We, although we did not have the outcome we wanted with our permanent search, Mr. Willingham has so far shown to be the kind of interim leader we were looking for to kind of shepherd our community and hold us back together. As a former Henderson parent, he really understands our community and he believes that families are his powerhouse, as do we. One of the positive things that had come out of the work this summer was, as you may recall, one of the challenges last year was that we were looking for a fully inclusive after-school program for our school to live up to its values and norms and that so far had not been provided. As I understand it, staff at the school and some parents led the way to work with the district to fund an after-school program for K zero through six using Henderson staff, the same people we trust our babies with during the day. To date, that staff, the program was rolled out the first week of October, staff have yet to be paid. We have yet to receive any firm assurance that the program will be funded through the year. As we are well aware, it is as for funding, it is only for this year. But we need some commitment to show that, that this district is taking our school seriously. This isn't about money. This is also about this program has been an opportunity to rebuild and heal our community between teachers, family, and staff. And what had been a source of positive engagement has turned quickly into a source of tension and confusion that was completely unnecessary. And if this district is going to become more inclusive, these are the types of questions it's going to need to answer. And if we can't do it at our school and use our school as an example where the families are engaged to figure out things like inclusive after-school programs, I really worry about the ability of the district to implement its inclusion plan. I urge you to look at our school and please provide us the assurances we need that our after-school program will continue for the rest of the year and funded by the district. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is Roy Carp, followed by Shelley Carmichael and Matt Sly.
Will my time be deducted because my wife took up a little bit extra? No, hopefully not. I'm Roy Carp, I'm the husband of Courtney Feeley-Carp, so, also a Roslendale resident and proud parent of Henderson Inclusion School fourth grader. I'll pick up where Courtney kind of left off. We are frustrated with what's happening at the Henderson School right now. We are, we love the Henderson, we are deeply committed to the Henderson, we know the value of the Henderson. But we also feel like family engagement needs to be centered in the work of inclusion. We don't see inclusion as a special education delivery mechanism, but really a values-based approach to everything that happens in your building and in your school community. And the heart of that is engaging all stakeholders, that means student voice, that means parent voice. That has not been our experience all the time. We sometimes feel like we are tolerated as parents. Another example, not, and not celebrated, our activism is not really celebrated and welcomed. Another example of that is the IPT. We have been pushing for parent reps on the IPT. We were told that we could not elect, the SPC could not elect any, so leadership handpicked reps. Those handpicked reps have not been showing up at the meetings. We are literally raising our hand, hey, we have people who are engaged that want to join the committee, I'm one of those people. It seems like they'd actually rather have empty chairs. So right now, parent voice is actually represented by empty chairs. Is that what our leadership sees as the, the ideal parent rep, an empty chair? Sometimes it feels that way. Don't you want to have engaged parents that bring their experiences to the table, their passion, their knowledge, their experience? We have so much to offer. So as the district moves towards more inclusive schools across the district, let's make sure that we're looking at it as a values-based system where families and all stakeholders can proactively address issues as they come up because that's what inclusive is. We can't do a non-inclusive inclusion planning process because that's what it feels like. So we need to include all those voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shelley Carmichael. Matt Sly will be our next speaker, followed by Benjamin Allen and Ruby Reyes.
Good evening, I'm Matt Sly, I'm a Jamaica Plain BPS parent. I propose a critical yet straightforward modification to our current exam school policy to replace the arbitrary bonus point value of ten with a more equitable, data-driven value. I estimate that this value is approximately two, but to confirm, I need BPS to release the data that I have been requesting since August. It is the value of ten points that is unfair, not the concept. A bonus to Title I applicants is sensible, but the value of the bonus needs to be based on data. I have discussed the ten points with Michael Kontopassis and Rachel Skerritt of the Exam School Task Force and both confirmed to me that the number ten was indeed chosen arbitrarily. Both also support my proposal to change ten to a new value based on the data from the past two admissions cycles. The unfairness of the ten points is now undeniable and we have two years, not one, of data that confirm as much. This year and last year, seventh and ninth grade admissions cycles both had eight tiers and ten bonus points. All four data sets, thousands of data points, all sow the same trends with applicants without points being significantly and unfairly disadvantaged relative to other applicants in their same tiers. We recently learned that in ninth grade admissions, the BLS cutoff was over one hundred for tiers five, six, and seven. The November first memo indicated that across the entire applicant pool, eight point two was the average difference between the unadjusted scores of zero-point and ten-point applicants. But this data point is irrelevant. Seats are allocated by tier. So we need to compare zero-points and ten-point candidates in each tier to validate any necessary bonus. This is detailed in Table One in the document that I hope you guys will have that I provided. I have been requesting this per-tier data from BPS since August, but it has not been released, but I have told it will be soon. In lieu, I have used other publicly available data to estimate the score differences in each tier, which I detail in Table One, emphasizing estimate. My indication is that an appropriate value would be approximately two points, which is derived by using a simple weighted average calculation of raw score differences in each tier. A few weeks ago, the superintendent said that as policymakers, we need to make decisions based on data. And yet, we have not done so here. I hope that the data will replace ten with a data-driven number. What I sincerely hope will not happen is that you do nothing. Keeping ten points through a third cycle of admissions is simply indefensible. The change outlined here is logical, simple, and equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. We have shared your written comments, thank you. Our next speaker is Benjamin Allen.
Hello, my name is Ben Allen. I'm the parent of a third grader at John F. Kennedy Elementary. I'm here to talk about the Long-Term Facilities Plan. At the start of this process, we were promised a comprehensive facilities plan with meaningful parent and community engagement. What we have so far is not a facilities plan and the parent engagement, I feel, has been superficial. What we've seen, and I've been from the listening sessions back in the winter through the rubric sessions last week, so what we've seen is we have a rubric, which is a guide for making decisions, but no, no sense of how the decisions will actually be made, who will be making them, and whether parents and community members will be able to weigh in at points where the decisions matter. So some questions that are unanswered after the rubric session last week are, will a comprehensive plan ever be proposed? Or will it be, continue to be one-off, piecemeal decisions as happened with the Shaw-Taylor and Sumner-Philips mergers and the O'Briant move? Will alternatives be proposed so that parents and community members can weigh in on different alternative plans and understand the trade-offs involved in those plans? And, yeah, who is the deciding body when these plans actually get put forward? Because the rubric, you know, sessions last week, we were able to play around with hypothetical scenarios, but no input into actual decisions being made. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
Good afternoon, my name is Ruby Reyes and I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and a Dorchester resident. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Improvement Plan clearly states that the district must, quote, "by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, create and implement a comprehensive, long-term master facility plan incorporating the recommendations of the facilities conditions assessment, expected to be completed by the beginning of FY twenty-three, twenty-four," end quote. A rubric is not a plan and it does not meet the SIP requirements. This decision is under your watch. You can't pretend you don't know. A rubric is not a plan. An equity planning tool is just a document until it is used. Saying community engagement doesn't make it real. Acknowledging that you should do better doesn't mean you are. Verbally saying that you are committed to anti-racism and equity and then considering a proposal to move the most racially and neurodiverse of the exam schools to a mostly white neighborhood of West Roxbury is not living that commitment. Promises are just lies until they are kept. There have been many promises that have been made and unkept. Where is the new building for the Jackson Mann School? Where is the proposed renovations for the McCormick-VCLA merger? Where are the entire grade levels at schools being closed when you said you were keeping K-eight and nine-twelve models? Where is the community engagement for all these decisions? Where is community engagement for the O'Briant School? Community engagement is also missing in the decision to place English learners, English language learners in regular ed classrooms without proper support. The English learner task force members who quit left because they know that it is a misguided policy and their expert recommendations are not being acknowledged. We are consistently lied to when it comes to major decisions, budgets, and buildings. Saying you are implementing community engagement doesn't make it real. Acknowledging that you should do better doesn't mean you are. And promises are just lies until they are kept. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now transition to virtual testimony. Please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment and be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your hand virtually when I call your name. We'll begin with Anne Chinchilla de George, followed by Deidre Manning, Kiona Avalos, and Jessica Butler. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Anne? Good evening. Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, my name is Anne Chinchilla de George. I live in Roxbury and I'm a parent at BLA. Again, thank you Superintendent Skipper for committing to fixing the school site councils and stating the importance of family voices in our schools because we know this model works when properly executed. However, it is undeniable that today, families are not in meaningful partnership with BPS and we have a ways to go. While our rights and voices are increasingly dismissed and downplayed, especially by your lawyers, it sadly appears that BPS sees families as the enemy instead of partners. It's baffling when so many of us really want to help our schools. We know two critical ways we should be working together are entitled, with Title I funding and the school site councils. Our participation in Title I requires that each school hold a meeting to inform families of their rights, decide what to spend the money on, and address any appropriations of those funds within the first eight weeks of school. But we haven't seen anything yet, even though we are federally mandated to do so. Are you requiring the schools to fulfill this obligation to families and the feds? And school site councils. School site councils are another opportunity. However, when we identified serious issues of our, of our rights being violated and protocols circumvented by school leaders, we sought out the process to fix it. I followed the protocols and the bylaws that you, Superintendent Skipper, co-signed to address issues through the Joint Steering Committee, of which you are even a co-chair. But the process was a massive failure. There has been no meaningful communication, no indication of corrective action as a school leader has already repeated the same violations, and no resolution whatsoever. I'm left asking you what else I can do. The process failed and now we're just being stonewalled, leaving us with no recourse and a huge imbalance of power. And even when corrections are made, like correcting the botched election at BLA, I fear more mistakes are being made because we aren't actually working together to fix it. I just don't understand. But with that said, I ask you Superintendent Skipper to please meet with me as partners to discuss how to fix what we know is very broken throughout the district.
Anne, thank you, you're at two minutes, could you please wrap up?
Because we can make meaningful change together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deidre Manning, followed by Jessica Butler and Mike Heishman.
I am a resident of Dorchester, a BPS parent since two thousand and sixteen, and the sole supporter of two minor children. I am grateful for the engagement of Mr. Cardet Hernandez and Dr. Stephen Alkins, who support changes to the exclusionary exam policy. I seem to find myself in a situation akin to being a character in a Confederacy of Dunces where I pursue a quixotic quest to prevent my daughter from being excluded from an opportunity to compete for an exam school seat. I do not understand why other school committee members, the superintendent, and the mayor continue to support a policy that makes it extremely difficult and sometimes mathematically impossible for certain eleven-year-old children to attend an exam school in the city. What is a parent to do when faced with an artificial construct designed to exclude her child from educational opportunities and bureaucrats who dig in their heels when faced with data that proves the policy is exclusionary? In my case, I came to the conclusion that I had to follow the ridiculous provisions of the exam school policy and decided my children and I needed to live elsewhere. I looked at an apartment last June in a Tier Four neighborhood that was a seven-minute walk from our home, but the three thousand dollar monthly rent was way outside my budget. I then reached out to friends, asking if they knew of anyone who might have a room available that I could rent. When an opportunity did not materialize, I went to online platforms and looked to rent a room from strangers, where not surprisingly, no one was interested in renting a room to me and my daughters. As I became increasingly desperate this past September, when even critical news articles, the actual testimony of excluded students, did not result in any changes to this ludicrous policy, a friend in a Tier Six neighborhood reached out to me and took us into her home. My daughter's chances of admission- My daughter's chances of admission are slight due to the overwhelming number of children who receive, quote, "bonus," end quote, points, and the high number of applicants in a Tier 6 neighborhood. But I feel empowered, having shown my daughters that I will be a fierce advocate for them, and how important it is to fight for the right to receive educational opportunities. Mayor Wu, Superintendent Skipper, school committee members, and BPS administrators, it is absurd that a single parent should have to uproot her family to give her daughter an opportunity to compete for an exam school seat. You should all be ashamed of yourselves, and you should do something now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Butler.
Hi, my name is Jessica Butler. I am a Dorchester resident, and I'm also a parent of a K-1 student at the Henderson Inclusion School. I'm right, I'm here to discuss the after-school program. Last Thursday, at the after-school program, the same day the police were called because no one was answering the door or the phone, and parents were unable to pick up their children. My four-year-old autistic child was walked from his classroom to the lobby by another student because the program was understaffed. My son has a history of running away when nervous. This is unsafe. This happened because the funding the district had promised the after-school program never showed up, and the program was understaffed. I've withdrawn my child from after-school until there's adequate staffing, and staffing has have received compensation for their previous work. This was distressing and without prior acknowledgement or official communication from the school or district regarding the funding and staffing issue. There has been a noticeable absence of documented confirmation from the school or district concerning the promised funding for both the upper and lower campuses. While references to funding have been made, the lack of transparent communication has raised doubts and eroded trust. I'm here asking for a fully-staffed, funded program, and until that is actually happening, my son will not be attending. This is disappointing, as I was one of two parents who worked with the school in developing the after-school program. It is imperative that we receive clear and written documentation detailing the exact source, amount, and schedule of the promised funding. We are committed to supporting the program, but it is necessary that we have concrete assurances regarding funding and staffing to ensure a successful and sustainable after-school experience for our children. I love the Henderson. I love the teachers. I love the parents and therapists. I want every child to be safe and included. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Heishman, followed by Jean Powers, Michelle Lynch, and Reyna Rantiera.
Mike Heishman, Beja, Dorchester, second-class citizen. Since these meetings have gone hybrid, I have been expelled twice from these meetings because I've gone over the amount of law at a time. I've violated the rules, and the consequences seem fair and reasonable. However, no one, including this evening, in the privileged class, those who are attending in person, has been expelled despite their many violations of the same rule. Let's see what's going to happen to me this evening. I can't stand the suspense. Oh, boy. You have, for a long time, done a terrible job teaching those children who are labeled as English language learners. All of us are ELL. Early this month, the majority of the members of your ELL task force publicly resigned because they refused to be complicit with your plans to continue your educational malpractice. You politely thanked them for their service, offered lame excuses for proceeding with your plans, and chose once again to ignore the research and expert advice. Every child that attends BPS is entitled to attend a school facility that is safe, healthy, and has the resources to deliver a first-class education. Since Ms. Skipper became our CEO, talk about excellence for all has stopped. Many of our children attend facilities that are disgraceful. You can't have excellence for all in supplorable facilities.
20 seconds.
With great effort to hear about plans that would bring excellent facilities for everyone. The latest scam is the Rubric proposal that you would discuss tonight. Will your Rubric be used to evaluate the racist Wu-Skipper-O'Brien plan that has drawn community opposition? Of course not.
Excuse me, Mr. Heishman. You're at your two minutes. Could you please wrap up?
Yes, well, why not? I'm almost done. The community needs to receive a master's facility plan, which will show how and when all of our children will one day soon attend excellent facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Thank you. We'll look for your written comments. Our next speaker is Jean Powers, followed by Michelle Lynch.
Hi, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jean Powers, and I'm the parent of a fifth grader at the Gardner Pilot Academy in Alston. Last Thursday, we learned by email that our school would lose its 7th and 8th grades after this year. The email claimed that this abrupt change was intended to limit transitions between schools. For our current 6th and 7th graders who had intended to apply to exam schools in 9th grade, this change means that they will have to transfer to another school for just one or two years before moving again. I ask you to consider the negative effect these transitions will have on these students, particularly those who came to us from the Jackson Man. The letter also noted the importance of adding more early education seats in Alston. I submit that BPS should have anticipated the increased need for early education seats and planned accordingly in advance. As the saying goes, "Your lack of planning should not always constitute our emergency." I propose a new direction for these announcements. Instead of delivering the bad news first and then the bad news second, let's work in some good news. Before announcing that our students have to leave their high-performing, nurturing, and inspiring school, let's give them a really great alternative. BPS could have spent the past two years pouring resources and funding into Brighton High to make it a school every kid in the neighborhood wants to attend. At the same time, BPS could have told us of the plan to eliminate our 7th and 8th grades after the current cohort has graduated from the school. Finally, I would like to remind everyone of what gets lost when we move to a 7th through 12th grade configuration. What's lost is the last two years of childhood. At Arcade 8 School, the 8th graders come to school on pajama day carrying their stuffies. They learn their first lessons on how to be adults by mentoring the younger students, not by imitating the older ones. You get only one chance to be a kid, and as our city, we've made a decision to cut that childhood short. Let's take some steps in the future to make the 12- to 13-year-old kids in our neighborhoods and our high schools feel like they can still be kids.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle and Reyna are not in the meeting, so our next speaker will be Laurel Mallett, followed by Edith Bazile.
Hi. Did that work? I apologize. Hopefully, I am on. My name is Laurel Mallett. I'm an attorney and a resident of downtown Boston with a son in the 8th grade. First and foremost, I am deeply respectful and appreciative of the immense amount of work completed by last year's task force in creating the new admissions policy for the exam schools. However, as many previous speakers tonight have stated, in the immediate, I feel we are obligated to address the number of points being allocated, even if we need more data to assess the concept, the overall concept in the system itself. Based on my own detailed review of the minutes provided last year by the committee, it looks like it's possible that the number of points were chosen simply from other school districts, actually in other states, who have similar systems and use the number 10 for their points. But obviously, that does not apply to our situation. It's an entirely different state school system, exam, et cetera. We do know for a fact that this year's students in three tiers for 7th grade and in one tier for 9th grade were effectively denied any opportunity to attend one of the three exam schools, which, in my opinion, is frankly a gross inequity. And to allow this inequity to exist for an entire additional admissions cycle just in order to receive more data points does not seem just whatsoever to our children. If more data is needed to determine a more correct amount of points to apply, couldn't we use prior year's composite scores from applicants from years prior to last year? It seems to me that BPS should have records of composite scores for applicants in years prior to 2023, and the calculations would be the same. So I'm not certain why we need to move forward with a system we know is inequitable to get more data points about how inequitable it is when we do have years and years' worth of data, I would assume, from prior years. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I apologize for the difficulty in getting on.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edith Bazile.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Black people were the only people enslaved and denied the right to read and write when public education was founded in Boston. Over time, we opened our own schools by any means necessary, leading to thriving communities of homeownership. Then came gentrification. When desegregation occurred, it took a court order to force BPS to hire black teachers. The Garrity Order stated, "If BPS achieved and sustained 25% teaching force of black teachers, the order would be disengaged." For almost 50 years, the district failed to comply, up to today. At the last school committee meeting, the chair stated, "The Garrity Order is old." Well, racism is older. Now, BPS refers to black teachers as "Garrity Teachers." This label is a deeply offensive reminder of the district's historical racial animus and outright contempt for black educators. The cumulative effect of Boston's history of racism has led black families to flee BPS at the highest rates. Why? BPS's assignment algorithms deny black students access to high-achieving, fully-funded, well-staffed schools. Black students are denied high-quality, early literacy interventions, pushed into segregated special education programs, have limited access to AP and exam schools vocational programs, and are gaslighted into the school-to-prison pipeline. BPS leadership invested $30 million in surveillance equipment and expanded safety positions with virtually no investment in restorative justice and reading specialists.
20 seconds.
John-Hart research states, "Black educators boost outcomes," but BPS pushes out black educators who challenge unjust policies. To be clear, opportunity gaps are policy decisions. Labeling black educators "Garrity Teachers" shows a lack of commitment to racial equity work. Will this committee hold the district accountable to anti-racist work?
Ms. Bazile, you're at your two minutes.
And you to tell the superintendent, as Chair Robinson did, quote, "I've got your back."
Thank you, Ms. Bazile. Thank you. That concludes our virtual testimony, but we do have one final speaker who's joined us in person rather than on Zoom. Kiona Avalas. She'll be our final speaker this evening.
Hello, thank you. I really wish we could have ended on that last one. That was such an important noticing and comment. My name is Kiona, Kiona Avalas, and my children attend the Henderson Inclusion School in Grade 2 and K-1. I'm a Dorchester resident, as we are. As was said previously, and as many of you know, the Henderson Inclusion School has been working through a lot of difficulties during the past couple of school years. I love our school, and many of us who have spoke are here on behalf of what has, what was, and had been experienced as a beloved community for all of our children to thrive and be their best. Last year, when fellow parents voiced our concerns, Superintendent Skipper committed to providing resources. Thank you very much for that. We look forward to the day when we can celebrate the fulfillment of that commitment, and we hope it is still coming. One of our major needs identified by the families had been for a fully-inclusive after-school program, as was heard by several other people. Our children need a safe and inclusive environment, and parents need an affordable option that they can trust for their students and their children to be the...
20 seconds.
We basically just need for what was promised to be upheld. It is not enough to just send an email and say that we're going to do something. We really need for that follow-through to be there. It's creating a lot of tension that doesn't need to be there within our school as we're trying to heal, and it's actually turning out to be not a very good situation. So we just really need for, as we're trying our best, to be met with the best and not to have to threaten to publicize what's going on in order for things to be followed through on.
Thank you, Kiona.
Thank you. Our kids' needs should be enough.
Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is extremely important to us. We'll move on to action items. Our first action item this evening is the payment of membership dues to the Mass Association of School Committees, known as MAC, MASC, for school year 2023 to 2024, in the amount of $8,635. MASC provides school boards throughout the state with valuable support through advocacy, training, and service. And I want to thank Executive Director Glenn Kucher for always making himself available and keeping us on track with his expertise. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments.
No questions.
For the first couple of grants that are continuation grants, just sort of looking at...
We're not on grants yet. This is MASC. I haven't gotten to grant yet.
Madam Chair, may I also just point out, I know the, I believe the Policy Director at Mass Association of School Committees has been working very closely with our Executive Secretary, Ms. Sullivan, as well as Ms. Parvex, to do a thorough review of our policies and put them in an order that we're going to be able to actually see them and have a regularly scheduled to review them. And appreciate the work of the Mass Association School Committees experts in helping make that a reality, as well as, obviously, the work of Ms. Sullivan and Ms. Parvex, who has spent long hours to make that happen.
Any other comments? And I want to know, you all know that I've spent a lot of time talking to Glenn Kucher to understand our work in Massachusetts, as well as the work that, you know, we get support with from the council. But it's very helpful to be able to have someone locally who's always available to come and speak with us. Is there any further conversation? Any more discussion? If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the payment of membership dues to MASC in the amount of $8,635, as presented. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Our next action item is for grants totaling $505,820. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Dr. Alkins.
Sorry, I had it.
That's okay.
So with, I guess, the first couple of grants...
Excuse me, Dr. Alkins? Could you just get close to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Sorry. With the first couple of grants, I was actually curious. I actually appreciate the section around, like, if something is a continuation grant, just sort of thinking about, like, outcomes. So for these first two, I'm actually curious about, like, how we are evaluating professional development success in terms of implementation. And what does that look like on the student end? And what are some of the metrics that we might be using moving forward?
Tiara, you are? Please join us.
How are you? I'm Tiara Dias. I'm the interim Executive Director for Early Childhood. And your question was in regards to how do we assess children's learning specifically?
How are we, well, a couple of the programs are related to professional development, right? And so one of the, for example, I'm looking at this first one here...
The Playful Learning Institute of Practice.
Yes, thinking about how the professional development being implemented, because this year you're now implementing a, you're piloting a curriculum, but based on the previous year of professional development. And I guess my question is, is how are you evaluating the success of that PD?
Right, right. Yes, and apologies, it's actually a revised curriculum, so it's not new. And just a little background, we actually use a fidelity tool to look at the adherence and quality, specifically focusing on children's moves for observations. As it relates to professional learning, I mean, there's the evaluation where obviously you're collecting data related to feedback from the educators, there's attendance. But I think the biggest piece is looking at the implementation, so going back to the fidelity tool.
Okay. That was mine.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions about grants? None?
No.
If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented.
One more question. So with, also within our grants package, we always say that, you know, the date of outcomes reports will be completed and available by a particular date. Are we creating or do we have a repository where all of these outcomes are just at our fingertips for us to access?
Through your chair. So I think right now they're being kept at the department level where the grant is, but what we can do is work on a mechanism to, for you to be able to see it. We'll work on like a drive.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, like, create more work for it. I'm just thinking about it in terms of ease of the way that not just we as school committee members, but also families can sort of see, like, can track the investment of certain things and say, like, okay, this is happening at my school. And I now know that they've been trained in a particular, or if we're talking about professional development, but any investment that's made so that they can see in real time, like, how it's being evaluated and how it's being invested. That's more or less...
Yeah, I'll work with the team to figure out what the public facing looks like for that. And then if there's more details for school committee, we can provide a deeper document.
Appreciate it.
So Chair, I typically don't ask questions during grant and grants, and I know we have a presentation coming up, but we have an opportunity here. We do have a school leader with us who identified himself, and Mr. King from Binka. And one of the grants is on this, and it's particularly around an issue that we've been talking about a number of times recently since we are outcomes-focused, student outcome-focused. So Superintendent, is it okay if we ask Head of School, King, just a couple of questions about this Mass Grad program?
I think we would be honored to have our school leader, King, come back up.
Sorry, Mr. King, you identified that you were here, so, but you're, this grant, and it's a very small dollar amount, but it's going right at the core of what we've been talking about, right? Of helping increase graduation rates and achievement rates. And in particular, in your write-up, you talk about focusing in on former SLYF students, and you talk about attendance rates being critical and chronic absenteeism, and then ultimately achievement. And I know it's a small dollar amount, but it appears they're going to be getting some coaching. And could you just help talk about it for a moment, please? Because this is so student outcome-focused, how do we miss the opportunity from right on the front lines implementing this?
Sure. First, I'll just say we're really happy to have the Mass Grad grant, but on the other hand, we get it because we need to do better with our graduation rates at Binka, so that's where the grant comes from. We've focused on two main areas in this round of Mass Grad. One is to work on attendance, and then at the same time, develop a system of mastery tasks and competencies that will allow students who maybe have missed some time, we have a lot of students who are working, a lot of students with a lot of things going on, give them an opportunity to have ways to catch up by completing mastery tasks and mastery units that will demonstrate, although the students may have missed a little bit of time, that they've met the standards that they need in order to be able to move on to the next level. So we're hoping we can simultaneously attend to what's happening around attendance, which is it's gone down a bit, but not have the students failing and repeating by using mastery units created by teachers that are on grade level and that will give those students an opportunity to catch up. They'll be able to do these mastery units both during vacation times and then have another opportunity over the summer. The other part of the Mass Grad work will be around coaches. So students who are in this situation of being potentially not on track to graduate need a lot of support. We have amazing guidance counselors at our school, but a guidance counselor load of 200 or so makes it hard to do that side-by-side, day-by-day coaching that some of our students need. And the Mass Grad grant, although not huge, is an important amount of money. $50,000 allows us to do a lot of work around stipending and paying folks to do some extra work to support our students.
Thank you. And just as a quick follow-up, particularly with the focus on attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism, help me out with what you find works? Is it one-on-one conversations with the families, is it with the students? Obviously, with students, particularly high school students, there's working, there's family situation, but there's also engagement in school itself?
Yeah, I mean, so...
What do you find is the most effective?
Yeah, I think it's a combination of things, and it's really, it depends on the individual student, but the tier-one baseline is to have an amazing community that makes kids feel really welcome and to have a great instruction in every classroom every day. That sets the baseline that will get most students in. And then we're going to have to troubleshoot kids who have individual circumstances. They might be working a lot, they might be young mothers, there's a lot of other individual situations. And with those kids, tier-two, we develop individualized supports to make sure that we can keep them in and attending. I'm really happy to say that I feel like we've turned a corner around attendance. Last year, we were still recovering from COVID, and the daily attendance report at Binka referred to as my daily dose of trauma because it was lower than I would want it to be significantly. And this year, we've turned a bit of a corner. We're not where we were pre-COVID, but we feel like the strategies we've used and the relationships we've built with students and families are, it's really paying off this year, and we're definitely back on the right track attendance-wise.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? So if there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. We'll move right into our main report, Capital Planning update on the education and design specifications, and also an update on the decision-making rubric. I will now invite Chief of Capital Planning, Dell Laverne Stanislaus, and Senior Advisor to the Mayor for Youth and Schools, Rebecca Granger, to please step forward with their presentation. While they're getting settled, I'd like to invite the Superintendent to give opening remarks.
Wonderful, thank you, Chair. The Long-Term Facilities Plan for the District is part of the Systemic Improvement Plan and is due to DESI at the end of December. I want to be clear that the Long-Term Facilities Plan is not an exact timeline of the future of 119 school buildings. Instead, it's a roadmap for how to make changes to our physical footprint. It will allow us to move with greater urgency, transparency, and commitment to our students. The plan will outline the shift in the district's physical footprint over the long term. It includes a tremendous amount of data reflecting the state of our buildings today. And this is all data that we have not had in the past in a uniform way. This data makes up a set of tools that will help us accelerate this work, doing so transparently, equitably, and rooted in the high-quality student experience as it's been defined through many community engagement over the last several years with surveys and community meetings. That is what has developed the student experience profile. Over the past 18 months, we've completed a facilities conditions assessment and launched a public dashboard, providing a transparent, detailed view into the state of our buildings. And it is stark. And we launched a school design study, giving us the tools we need to build and renovate our schools more quickly, to give our students the welcoming, inspiring learning environments that we want for our students. The design study includes the educational specifications and the design standards, so we do the construction work faster and have a baseline of what all BPS schools must have for physical spaces to support students' learning experiences and success. It also includes a decision-making rubric, a tool to guide our investments in facilities based on a transparent data framework. This tool will be used in concert with a racial equity planning tool, really allowing us to understand impacts on students and work with the community members to build understanding of our opportunities for investment and the trade-offs. Dell and Rebecca will review these tools with you and Emmanuel in more detail shortly. We all recognize this is an ambitious undertaking. It's one that has not happened here before. Our current facilities are aging and in need of repair and renovation. Close to half of our buildings were constructed before World War II, and some are close to 100 years old. And most are not designed to provide the fully-inclusive, high-quality education we're committed to providing in BPS. They were designed to meet the needs of another century. And we need to acknowledge the role of systemic racism in the decline of our buildings. It will take careful planning to undo decade upon decade of neglect and, in some cases, indifference. This work takes vision, commitment, and determination. After many decades of deferred decision-making, shifting our physical footprint will be disruptive and, in some cases, difficult. The tools we've developed over the last 18 months will enable greater transparency and collaboration with our communities to understand how and why certain decisions are made. This work will require all of us to be creative and flexible when unforeseen challenges arise. It also requires us to have hope for the real opportunity we have to shift our physical footprint with urgency for the benefit of our current students and future generations. I have every confidence in this team. I'm especially grateful for Dell's leadership, Rebecca's leadership, as we build the infrastructure that will guide our decision-making. This work is complex and complicated and can feel overwhelming at times for all of us. But this team is thoughtful and deliberate, and we're working hard to create a system that will allow us to move forward as a district. Tonight, you'll hear more about how student experience will be measured, the proposed building models, and how those building models will mesh with our existing facilities. You will also learn more about the mechanics of the rubric or the tool that we will use to guide how we will invest our resources. The rubric will allow us to assess our existing building conditions, propose investments, and understand the impact of those investments and whether they're equitable. In some ways, we're in the final mile of the marathon we've been running for the past 18 months as a lot of these tools and sets have been created. This is one more opportunity for feedback before we finalize our Long-Term Facilities Plan. Tonight, we would like to hear from school committee members what makes sense, what's missing, how can we use these new tools over the long term to shift our physical footprint? Following tonight's meeting, we'll provide you with a comprehensive memo incorporating your feedback, and we'll then come back to you on Wednesday, December 6th, with a high-level update that incorporates your thoughts, including specific language for a vote at a future meeting. At this point, having sat with the team today, it is very exciting to at last see all of this data out there. And I say that as somebody that has been in this district, you know, over three decades at different points, and never before have we been able to see the comprehensive data of the district when it comes to facilities, when it comes to what the community has asked for, and to see how those fit together. So at this point, I will happily turn it over to Dell and to Rebecca and to Emmanuel.
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dell Laverne Stanislaus, Chief of Capital Planning for Boston Public Schools. I'm joined here tonight with my colleague Rebecca Granger, Senior Advisor to the Mayor for Youth and Schools, and Emmanuel Zanzurkier, our Director of Data and Strategy for the Capital Planning Team. I am happy to be here tonight to share our progress in developing a decision-making tool we're calling a rubric. This tool will allow us to make decisions about where we invest across the district in the future. The tool is grounded in data and informed by subject matter experts and community engagement. The decision-making rubric is one of the key components of the Long-Term Facilities Plan. About two months ago, Rebecca and I shared how community priorities shape the BPS high-quality student experience and how physical spaces in our schools and the physical footprint of our district are both necessary to support this experience. We also shared an overall framework for building a decision-making rubric, a transparent, data-driven tool to support decision-making, grounded in evidence to guide where and how we prioritize investments in our facilities to support the high-quality student experience. The rubric will begin guiding our decision-making processes starting in 2024. Tonight, we're going to dive deeper into the data and metrics behind the decision-making rubric, and we'll also have the opportunity to engage with the rubric tool in real time using the school buildings in Austin-Brighton as an example. But first, Rebecca will walk us through where we've been. We will then walk through where we're going and how this will work, how this work will support capital planning and investments across the district moving forward.
Good evening. About a year and a half ago, Mayor Wu launched the Green New Deal for BPS, a commitment to invest in school facilities with greater urgency. The Green New Deal for BPS began with an initial set of 15 projects. Some of these projects have moved into design and construction over the past 18 months. This includes the Irving Building in Rosendale as a new home for a combined Philbrick-Sumner community, the PJ Kennedy in East Boston, and Edwards Building in Charlestown as the new home for the Horace Mann School. Some of these projects have gone through extensive programming and planning and will move into design next year. This includes the Madison Park Project, the Mel King Academy, and White Stadium. Other projects are still in the planning phase, such as our submitted application to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to build a new campus for the combined Shaw-Taylor School community, and early next year, the planning and design for a more significant transformation of the BCLA... And early next year, the planning and design for a more significant transformation of the BCLA McCormick School Campus will begin. Which feels appropriate with the comments tonight. All of this work is done in partnership with the City of Boston's Public Facilities Department. We're grateful to our PFD partners for really dramatically accelerating the pace of this work over the last year. And for helping us set the stage for sustained progress.
Boston Public Schools currently serves approximately forty-nine thousand students across a hundred and nineteen schools across the city of Boston. Many of our buildings cannot support the high-quality student experience that all of our students deserve. As a district, we have an enormous amount of work to do to build a physical footprint. That supports the high-quality student experience. Building this physical footprint means new builds and renovations. But it also means shifting towards fewer but larger schools so that all of our schools. Can be well-resourced, fully staffed, and designed to be inclusive learning environments. Tonight, I want to be fully upfront and transparent. That closures and mergers are in our future, along with new and renovated facilities. Moving this work faster and with more transparency. Includes investing in fundamental new tools that would support every project moving forward. These tools are the components of the long-term facilities plan. As a team, we've been working on two parallel tracks. We've been advancing key projects that were announced. Announced while also doing the planning work in the background. Starting next year, the two parallel tracks will come together. While we stand by our past commitments, new projects will be guided by the long-term facilities plan. To quickly give an overview of the tools you'll see on this slide. Facilities Condition Assessment. The FCA is an objective collection of data on the physical condition of our buildings. Our facilities team worked with a group of independent facilities experts. And their team analyzed the remaining useful life. Equipment in our, in every building across the district. The FCA Dashboard is currently on our BPS website where anyone can access. The Design Study. In fall of twenty twenty-two, we began the school design study. To develop a common set of educational and building standards. For new or renovated pre-K through six and seven twelve schools. This will help us create a transparent framework for prioritizing investment. And to accelerate construction and renovation once decisions are made. Engagement. Throughout listening sessions, focus groups, and survey. We identified community priorities. Our consultant team walked nearly every BPS school building. To understand what spaces were there and how they were being used. Design Standards. Facilities and climate experts developed design standards. Technical details on everything from lighting to furniture to energy systems. These outline our climate commitments and make it so. We are able to make the design process quicker and smoother on, on every future project. Education specification. Educators and experts across BPS worked to develop educational specification. A foundation of programs and services that should be offered in every pre-K through six. And seven through twelve school across the district. These are in the final stages of review and will be shared publicly in the coming weeks. Tonight, we'll share an overview of the four building models described in the Ed specifications. And show what they can offer our students. The Rubric Tool. Over the last year. We've also been working with data to develop a decision-making framework, which we will explore a bit more tonight. Tonight, we are sharing our work so far and asking that you to engage in the messiness of these complex process. We welcome your feedback. It will help us continue to be better.
So the data-driven tools that Dell just described are components of the long-term facilities plan. We want to be clear that the long-term facilities plan is not a full list of exactly what will happen to every BPS school. Instead, it's an ambitious process document with a set of dynamic tools. That can be used to shape facilities' decisions well into the future in partnership with community. Our goal is to share these tools publicly to provide a common set of knowledge about our buildings and our district. No decision-making rubric will tell us the right answer or a single solution. But it does provide an objective framework grounded in data for understanding the impact of capital planning proposals. This will allow us to apply the racial equity planning tool with fidelity. By specifically analyzing data to understand disaggregated impacts. Our school buildings need a lot of work, and we can't improve them all at once. We have to make decisions on how to prioritize new builds, renovations, reconfigurations, and other major decisions like mergers and closures. Renovations will continue to happen across the district, so tonight we're talking about larger capital projects, new builds, and major renovations.
So how do we create the high-quality student experience? The community priorities we shared last time we met were used to build four different building models. Please note, these are specifically for pre-K through six and seven through twelve schools. But schools with other grade configurations will continue to exist and be considered for major investments. While there are five bullets on this slide, the small seven through twelve is not a building model. We included it here because it represents many of our current high schools. Not every school building should or will house a building model. But the four building models would serve as a guide for a new or renovated pre-K through six. Or seven through twelve school. Building models outline the ideal set of spaces that a pre-K through six. And seven through twelve buildings should provide to support the high-quality student experience. These are described in more detail in the educational specifications. Which define the sizing and programming of spaces in new and renovated buildings. We look forward to sharing these education specification in full soon and hearing your feedback. This will be a dynamic document as, as community priorities evolved over time. To understand where we are going, we need to understand where we are. The building models describe the physical spaces in future projects. The Building Experience Score assesses how well a building currently supports our collective. Community priorities. This slide shows how the Building Experience Score was developed. The experiences shared during the listening sessions and the survey shaped our collective community priorities. The community priorities, along with overall BPS priorities. Then informed the four categories of the high-quality student experience. These priorities were translated into, into metrics to measure. How well the physical spaces in our buildings support the high-quality student experience.
So the four categories of the high-quality student experience are best supported by buildings. That have the appropriate physical spaces. Metrics help us determine what aspects of the student experience each building is able to support. Each metric ties to a specific space or design element. So the metrics that you see below each of those. Help us tell, is each community priority present in the physical spaces in the building? Does each space serve the people, activities, educational needs that occur within it? We moved from experiences shared by community to a system of measurements to ensure that our collective priorities shape the rubric. Tool and help to guide investments. Inclusive education and the physical spaces in our buildings supporting inclusion. Is core to the future of Boston Public Schools. While the word inclusion is not directly on the slides or in these metrics. The metrics to support it is, sorry, metrics to support it being central in our schools is included across every one of these categories. The rubric is continually being refined, and we are addressing whether our current buildings can support inclusion. And ensure that future buildings have more space and more flexible spaces so that inclusive education can happen district-wide. So what does this mean for the physical layouts of our buildings now and in the future? First, let's look at existing layouts. This set of shapes that you see on the left is organized around the corridor or hallway. Shows what many school buildings in BPS are like today. It's more difficult in small buildings to create collaborative learning and community spaces due to limited facilities and layouts. You can see here that there are few classes per grade, limited student support spaces, and few specialty classrooms.
Building models have the physical spaces needed to support each aspect of the high-quality student experience. First, building models are built around learning cohorts. Learning cohorts are a unique group of spaces home to a group of teachers and students. Offering a variety of settings for learning activities. Learning cohorts allow for high-quality learning opportunities. And build a sense of community for students and teachers in each cohort. The diagram on the screen shows that build, shows that building models. Have more classrooms per grade, including general inclusion and substantially separate spaces. Have more specialty classrooms for art, music, science, and career technical education. More resources for therapeutic and pull-out spaces, space for community hub programming, and outdoor space. As you can see represented on this slide, building models also have multiple classrooms at each grade level. You can see here that there are four classrooms at each grade level, represented in blue. The orange spaces are substantially separate spaces, corresponding to each grade level. Allowing for more opportunities for partial inclusion across classrooms. The larger footprint, the larger footprint allows for multiple classrooms at each grade band. To provide a school building with the physical spaces to support inclusive education. With increased flexibility, including specialty classrooms shown in pink. And resource therapeutic and pull-out spaces shown in green. Building models have public spaces like libraries, gyms, cafeterias, and auditoriums. Which we know many of our older, smaller buildings lack. They have specialty classrooms with appropriate equipment and size to host classes like visual and performing arts. Music, science labs, maker spaces, career technical education, health. To round out the student experience. They have flexible spaces and mobile furniture so that spaces can evolve as a building program changes over time. They're a healthy, resilient, energy-efficient, and fossil-fuel-free. In accordance with Mayor Wu's recent executive order. Requiring that all new or renovated municipal buildings be free of fossil fuels. They also include more resource therapeutic and pull-out spaces. To expand access and allow for appropriate and sufficient services. To be provided to students of all needs. This mean that in new or renovated buildings, students will have access to a broader complement of programs. These building models represent what we as, as a collective community have said we want for all of our schools. Now, our job is to advance capital projects that bring us closer to this vision.
Most of the buildings in the district were analyzed to determine if a building model could possibly fit in our schools as they currently are. And based on that analysis, seventy-one school buildings or sites have the potential to implement at least one building model. Through renovation, expansion, or a new build on site. Forty-eight school buildings or sites do not easily fit a building model. So more analysis is required to determine if there are design solutions to make a building model possible. This does not mean that forty-eight buildings should or will close. In many cases, we can think creatively about how to best use these buildings and sites to support a high-quality student experience. Sometimes across multiple buildings. Three of these forty-eight schools, for example, are the Three Elliott School Buildings. While none of these buildings can on its own support a model program. The Elliott School stretches across three distinct buildings to provide a broad range of programs to its students and families. There are other examples in BPS of successful schools across multiple campuses. Creating more two-campus schools will likely be a part of BPS future. We are continuing to refine the rubric tool, so these numbers will likely shift. But these numbers give you an idea of where we currently are. And how with investment, our buildings can better support the high-quality student experience. So how do we know if a building model can fit a school building or site? In some buildings, a building model can be provided by renovating the building. This means improving the inside of the building to create the right number of classrooms and other spaces. These buildings should already have gyms, libraries, cafeterias, and auditoriums. If a building does not have enough classrooms or is missing public spaces. It may need a renovation and an addition. This means that the inside of the building is redesigned and new spaces are added to the expanded building. If there is no way to renovate an existing building, a new building may be constructed on a site to match the building model. All three of these models, sorry, all three of these methods are used to test what is possible on existing buildings or sites. The fourth image on the far right shows joining school communities across multiple buildings. This moves us closer to our students being in spaces. Sorry, in buildings that have the physical spaces to support the high-quality experience as we move towards the future of our facilities.
So how can the rubric tool help us make decisions about where to renovate or build new buildings? The rubric will support decision-making in service of high-quality student experience. In a transparent manner as we figure out where to prioritize investments. All in service of reaching a vision where all students and families have access to the high-quality student experience. Close to home. This vision can be broken down into three parts. The first part is what and how. What are we committed to providing to students and families, and how can we provide it? The next part is the who. Who should our decision-making center, who might it impact, and how? The next part is the where. The next part is the where. Where can we prioritize investments to best serve students and families close to home? The rubric uses data to measure each of these parts. The rubric works in three steps. At workshops over the last few weeks, we worked through each of the three steps with community members using actual data. We are continuing to refine the rubric and build a user-facing tool so that the community members, that community members can experiment with different investment scenarios themselves. Step one, we will assess existing conditions by asking ourselves, who does not have access to a high-quality student experience? Which buildings do and do not support a high-quality student experience? Where are their too few seats close to students and families? In step two, we propose investments. As a district and city, we are committed to prioritizing school facility investments that impact the students and families identified in the OAG policy. Support the high-quality student experience throughout facilities and serve students close to home. This means focusing transformational capital projects in buildings and sites that can support a building model. In step three, we run our proposed investments through the rubric to understand the impacts of those investments. The tool allows you to understand impacts on students overall, on disaggregated student groups by race, ethnicity, language, and disability, and on entire neighborhoods. In the workshop over the last few weeks, we heard good feedback about what other data should be considered, and will continue to refine the tool to bring these new perspectives in.
So we must also consider if the building or site with investment can support a building model in the future through a renovation, expansion, or new build. These are the investments that we can test using the rubric. This map shows the forty, or sorry, the seventy-one sites that can support a building model and the forty-eight sites that cannot easily support a building model without further analysis. These sites, the black dots, are relatively evenly distributed across the city. On these sites, we might consider merging schools to create two-campus schools, reconfiguring grades, or programming to better fit the building or site, or taking a building offline. If there are nearby schools that can provide students with a higher-quality student experience. Many buildings in BPS do not currently support the high-quality student experience. We want to be clear again, wonderful things happen in every single BPS school every day, but thanks in large part to our incredible team of educators and staff. This tool assesses the buildings, not the school communities. Based on our initial data framework, we can look at how many buildings support each aspect of the high-quality student experience: rigorous and culturally-affirming learning experiences, wellness and enrichment, a supportive network of caring adults, and overall facilities condition. Almost all buildings can support at least one category, but very few support all four.
In just a moment, Emmanuel, our Director of Data and Strategy, will run a demonstration of the rubric tool. What's presented here on this slide is what it looks like in the tool to propose investments on a specific site. The tool allows you to select among the different building models that are possible on that site. Some sites have multiple building models available, like you see here. Some have only one, and some have none. Finally, the rubric analyzes data about students, families, and neighborhoods to understand who might be impacted by facilities' investments. This includes student data that's disaggregated to help understand impacts for each individual student group. We want to know who was provided with access, where, where, sorry, were impacts equitable? The rubric tool looks at all BPS students and routes each student to each BPS building. We looked at how many students live near each school building, defining "near" as within one mile for elementary school students and two miles for high school buildings. The rubric then tells you how the number of students within the area compares to the estimated number of seats in that building. The rubric tool calculates the number of students who could be served based on a school building's capacity. One of the total number of students, one, out, sorry, out of the total number of students close to each school building. It's important to note that this is not the same as who is actually enrolled, nor who is assigned under the district's assignment policy. This evaluates available seats and proximity to those seats to better understand who could be impacted by a long-term investment in a school building. We use actual Boston demographics data to understand the impact on different investments on disaggregated student groups included in the opportunity and achievement gaps policy. This policy identifies that certain student groups are facing greater gaps in support and achievement. District decisions, including facilities' investments, must analyze disaggregated data to address these opportunity gaps and ensure equitable outcomes. The rubric also uses neighborhood demographics because we know that school facilities' investments impact neighborhoods and surrounding communities. The rubric analyzes these demographics because we heard from community meetings that schools are neighborhood resources, so school facility decisions do and will impact surrounding communities. And in turn, neighborhood conditions like poverty and lack of affordable housing affect student and family educational experiences. Our commitment to schools as community hubs also creates an opportunity to think of school facility investments as investments in climate resilience, as schools can serve as safe havens during times of extreme heat or flooding. One clear piece of feedback we heard during the rubric workshop was that we shouldn't just be looking at the current population. We should be looking at projected population growth to understand where there's the greatest mismatch between students and seats. We are working to include this data in the rubric tool.
Okay, so tonight, we'd like to do something a little bit different and get you more involved in the presentation and have you interact with the rubric. So last week, we hosted two rubric workshops, and during our time together, community members dug into data to better understand the school buildings in Region 1. For a reminder to those listening, BPS is divided into regions. Schools are grouped into particular geographic regions within the district that have a regional support model. Region 1 holds schools in East Boston, the North Inn, and Charlestown. In the community workshops, participants work together to determine a desired outcome, to make investment decisions in buildings, and run those decisions through the rubric, and then to see the impact of their decisions. Community members ran multiple investment scenarios so they could discuss different desired outcomes and compare the impact of making different investment decisions.
Tonight, we will focus on the elementary school buildings in Alston-Brighton, all that fall within Region 4. Alston-Brighton allows us to see an example of a group of schools as an ecosystem. Alston-Brighton has five elementary schools: the Edison (K-8), the Baldwin (Early Learning) Pilot Academy, the Lyon (K-8), the Winship Elementary, and the Gardner Pilot Academy. The Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, which is a pre-K through 12 dual-language school serving a special population. The Horace Mann School and the Jackson Mann Site will not show up as options for investment in the tool because they are already in the pipeline as planned projects. I would like to invite Emmanuel in to help with the next part of the engage, to engage with the rubric.
Emmanuel, do you actually mind going back to the slides for just a moment? Thanks. Yeah.
So it's hard to see on that screen. Would it be better for school committee to sit in the front row and look up when you do the tool itself?
Oh, sure, that'd be great.
Yeah, because it's just, it's real small here. I know my eyesight's bad, but I think it probably makes more sense for us to shift.
Okay, that sounds great.
When you're ready, when you're ready, let us know.
Okay, no, we can do it now, and then we'll, we'll shift us to. Um, yeah. Okay. Yeah, it did. I kind of like this. Okay, but I'll also use the mic. You tell me if I'm not, well, obviously, I'm not when I turn my head. Okay. All right, so to frame our exploration, we're going to revisit some slides shared during the presentation so that we can tie in what you've just learned to how it applies to the rubric. Okay, so tonight, we want to assess existing conditions, and then propose investments, and then understand the impacts. So we're going to run through a scenario, and let's actually start with step one, which is to assess existing conditions. So the Alston-Brighton school population trends are not showing an increased need for new seats. However, there is a need for buildings that support high-quality seats. And just to tie this back to the community sessions, the, during those sessions, there actually were data sheets that people could link into. Because we're kind of doing this and people are watching from afar, we're not going to give you those data sheets, but I'll give you some of the key factors. We're not going to dig into the building experience scores tonight, however, for context, each of the buildings has a building score that we're about to look at, has a building score that is less than four. Four is the highest, so that means that none of these elementary buildings have the physical spaces to fully support the high-quality student experience. So an investment in building improvements would benefit each school's ability to support a high-quality student experience. Okay, now, let's think about step two, that's proposing investments. To do this, we want to focus on each building's ability to support a building model with an investment. If you'll go forward, thank you. Oh, so as a reminder, these are the, the metrics that are in the rubric that are going to help us know how the, the building scores, and that's when I let you know that they're less than a four, what that means, okay? So they don't have all of these spaces. All right, next one. Okay, so now in step two, we're thinking about, does the building support a building model? And as a reminder, there are four different, but we're going to look at elementaries. So we're looking at the small pre-K through six, which is approximately three hundred and fifty-six students, and a large pre-K through six, which is approximately seven hundred and twelve. Those are the two types of bottle, of buildings that you can invest in. All right. Emmanuel, if you don't mind looking quickly at the spreadsheet?
Okay.
And we'll actually go to the very first tab. Okay, so these are the schools in Alston-Brighton. These are the elementary schools. Yeah. Sure. Good? Okay, great. All right, so the spreadsheet shows the largest building model, model feasible data that the site can support. So you can see that we're providing you with fairly simple data tonight to help us be more focused in our discussion, and we're going to focus on this desired outcome. We want to provide the greatest number of seats that support the high-quality student experience. Okay, so with this, where would you choose to make an investment to meet our desired outcome? The most seats supporting the high-quality student experience? And then, when you all decide, and by you all, I mean, school committee members, when you decide where you would like to put the investment, we'll then run it through the rubric so that you can see the impact. And just as a reminder, the Horace Mann School and the Jackson Mann Site will not show up in the options when Emmanuel goes in because they are already in the pipeline as planned projects. Okay, I'm kind of loving this. We're changing seat, and now we've got mood lighting, so now it's time for some rubric digging in. Okay, so to let you know again, we are trying to figure out, how can we have the most high-quality seats? And you can invest in one of these five buildings. And happy to answer any clarifying questions, and then Emmanuel will pull up the rubric. So we can't actually move forward until you decide where you'd like to invest? So we are forcing you to have a conversation like we did with our community sessions. Dr. Alkins, you also have to come to the mic.
Well, you need to consider also the demographics of the school. I would also consider a history of what renovations have already taken place at the school, what has been the efficacy of those, those, I'm just thinking out loud.
Sorry, Dr. Alkins, I'm sorry. Can you get closer to the mic just so the interpreters can hear you and we can all hear you?
I apologize.
Thank you.
I was just saying that I would still think about what are the demographics of the school, but also what's the history of renovations that have existed at each of these schools? Just thinking out, thinking out loud, sorry.
Yeah, that's fair, and during the community sessions, people had all of that information. We've just limited it a bit so that you have to look specifically at, can it have a model program? But happy to, to also share all that so that we've got the complexity in there.
All right. For the sake of the simulation, are people okay with just the larger school?
Yeah, drive it.
All right, here we go. Edison (K-8).
And Emmanuel, as you go through, do you mind just letting people know what you're doing?
Sure. So this is the part of the tool where we can make the selection. Previously, and I'll just really quickly show you, this is the current state analysis where we do get to see some of that demographic information that you were talking about, but for the demonstration. We are limiting ourselves to one school, and we're trying to maximize the number of seats. So we've decided to choose the Edison Large PK to six. So now that I've chosen that, this is where we're going to actually run simulations for student assignments. This can give us a sense, and we run multiple simulations, and we can kind of get a sense overall of the student population that's being affected. So I'm just running through some of the criteria for us to run it, and then finally, we can actually view, and I will maximize the screen. We can see what the impacts are, and so, again, we proposed investment in one school, and I know this is small font right now, but we've invested in the Edison, and so let's take a look at.
And Emmanuel, as you go through, do you mind just letting people know what you're doing?
Sure. So this is the part of the tool where we can make the selection. Previously, and I'll just really quickly show you, this is the current state analysis where we do get to see some of that demographic information that you were talking about, but for the demonstration. We are limiting ourselves to one school and we're trying to maximize the number of seats. So we've decided to choose the Edison Large PK to six. So now that I've chosen that, this is where we're going to actually run simulations for student assignments. This can give us a sense, and we run multiple simulations, and we can kind of get a sense overall of the student population that's being affected. So I'm just running through some of the criteria for us to run it. And then finally, we can actually view, and I will maximize the screen. We can see what the impacts are. And so again, we proposed investment in one school, and I know this is small font right now, but we've invested in the Edison. And so let's take a look at some of the key things that we want to look at. So first of all is the number of seats that we have added as high-quality seats. So as Rebecca had mentioned, none of the five schools met the high-student experience. So that would say there are no seats that are supporting a high-student experience. So by making this one investment that you have chosen, we've added 712 seats that are supporting a high-quality student experience. From that, we want to look at the number of students who have access. So again, access is being defined as being within one mile for PK through six. And so we can actually see that we've provided an additional 297 students with access to the BPS high-quality student experience. And of those 290, and this is out of 1,552 students in the area. Of those 297 students, 248 of them identify with one or more of the OAG policy groups. And we can actually do a breakdown of those stu, those 297 students by the different groups. So 39 of them are IEP students. We have 124 new English learner status students, et cetera. So we can break down that way to see what was the impact of our decision. One of the final parts of this is schools located within 200 feet of census tracts designated as high vulnerability. And that's based off of the CDC and the Climate Ready Boston vulnerability indexes. So in this area, one of the schools is within 200 feet of one of these census tracts. Unfortunately, our choice did not improve that school. And so this gives you a sense of some of the data that we have and some of the things that we can think about. One of the key things that I like to think about is we've added 712 seats, but only 297 students have access to those seats. And so this gives us some more information to think about with our scenarios.
So let's pause there for just a moment to see if you have questions on what you just saw.
I think that one of the things, as I was using this earlier today, is the richness of the information about the region. And I think if we had sort of stopped and paused and looked at the region, you really get a sense of divestment in certain areas of the city. And you really see that in the data, based on the students who are in that area of the city. The other thing I think, you know, we want to be able to look at, and I think this highlights, is that even when you choose a building and you upgrade that building or you make it so that it can serve the student experience, the location of the building may or may not actually improve enough students in that area to access it. And so I think where this becomes really valuable is as you start to choose and make different selections of buildings, you start to see how your choice, how that, what the impact is for students in that community. So if you were to take another choice and run it, it would be interesting to sort of let school committee see what that would be like.
Can I put the other?
Yeah, let's do that. And I think one of the things that struck me and Superintendent Mary, Superintendent Mary, Superintendent Skipper, I feel like this adds on, although I might start calling you that, is that, that the school, investing there, the school was much larger than the number of kids who were actually within a one-mile radius, which is what we set for elementary schools. And so we were also thinking, you know, when, when we said, okay, we're trying to create as many seats as possible, sometimes that means we're creating seats, but not within walking distance of our learners.
It seems like the intention of this tool is also is that it is family-facing to a degree, right? So my question is also how or the guide that's going to accompany this because it may not seem as apparent to some folks, some families, about how they would readily be able to use this with a very simple, straightforward readout. So I'm just wondering what you all are thinking behind that.
Yeah, so we are actually currently working on a public-facing, sorry, we're currently working on a public-facing dashboard that would be a more guided version of this tool that would kind of tell a story and kind of show people like what is the information and go through a little bit more in-depth explanation of it. So that, that's what we're working on.
Do you want questions now more broadly or do you want just on like the demo? What are you looking, what are we, what are we doing?
Maybe if we do right now on the demo and then that way we can have the broader when you're back by your mics, unless you need your steps and then you're welcome to. But that, I think that might be easier.
Great.
Okay.
I'm thinking about what Dr. Alkins said, and I wasn't experiencing it as a family-facing tool. I was like, oh, this is like great, lovely that you have this internally. In an effort to do what at least my entire time on the committee, we've been talking about, which is like build a master's facilities plan. Like a real, like, we're talking about a bunch of puzzle pieces of a much bigger puzzle. And I think like there's an incredible hunger for the puzzle, like what's the puzzle? But I guess in this, is there ever like a denominator? Like is it ever like, we have to get to why and so we're using this tool to run a bunch of scenarios? Or is it that, because then it's just an exercise in running scenarios, which is fun, but it sort of is like monopoly. It's like, what could you do if you had to do it? And then you're just like clicking around versus like what are we actually trying to solve for? Like is there an enrollment number that we're trying to solve for with high-quality buildings? Is every region going to have a certain number of seats? And then what would the number of buildings be needed in order to fill those seats? I guess that's the part that I'm missing. I like the exercise of like, it's fun to sort of play around and be like, it could do these things. And I think it's important, it's like a system that is probably historically has been needed in the organization, but I just don't see like to what end it serves. And maybe I broke, you said don't, but I couldn't help myself.
I didn't know what I was going to ask, I was just going to start talking.
Yeah, you were, it just, you were inspired.
The name of my memoir, just start talking.
So yes, so what this does is it puts all of the metrics into a, a tool so that then as we, and really honestly, as we look at different, we're looking through, you know, a, a region lens right now because it can be an organizing. But as we look through geographic areas, different areas of the city will need to be served in different ways. And this lets us know, you know, the number of kids in that area that would need access to schools. So then we know, okay, here's how many seats we actually need. And now we can make investments to fill those seats. It also allows us to take an ecosystem view. So instead of saying, we're going to do this one because we need seats and then we need to do this one, we can now look at, okay, here is what we need across the district. The academics and data team at BPS are so thoughtful about what is the programming that we need? Can the buildings hold that programming? So the way that you said it about puzzle pieces, this allows us to take, you know, all of the information from BPS and apply it to the, the puzzle pieces, but actually have the data and metrics to say, this is what we need in a space to fulfill those. These are the number of seats that we would then need. And we can actually, you can get into the tool and say, here's the demographic group we want to focus in on. Or here's a, you know, it can get a lot more specific. We're just keeping it a bit more high-level tonight. But it, it, it allows to, us to think thoughtfully about what those puzzle pieces are and really what the entire puzzle is.
Can I ask one more question?
I beat you to the mic.
Okay, go.
I also, I also think that, this came up in our earlier conversation when we were doing the tool together. And I think that there's four or five different lenses, kind of like in an eye doctor where you apply a lens and you see a certain way that re, resets the value system of what you're looking for. So in this case, we're looking to optimize seats, right, quality seats. But there are other lenses that we can apply. I think the value of this is that when we would be using it with recommendations, if somebody from the community runs the same process, they're going to get the same data. And that is very different than how it has been done in the past, where a group of people get in a room and they make recommendations and then the community's like, well, how did we get there? So that, that personally for me is a big one. I think the other part that I would answer to your question, because I asked, I asked it of these guys into Emmanuel, is is there a minimum max to this? So in other words, when you're running the lens, is there an ideal set of configuration that actually maximizes that scenario? And the answer to that is yes. And I think part of that will be some of the recommendations that come out of each of the scenarios.
So maybe we look at the other also, I think you were.
I did the Gardner, yeah.
Okay, great.
So what we're looking at now is the impact if, instead of choosing the Edison as a large K to eight, we had decided to choose the Gardner as a small PK to six. So in this case, in this scenario, we've provided an additional 356 seats that support the high-quality student experience. But looking at the number of students, we've provided an additional 327 students with access to the high quality, right? So this is a higher percentage of seats that are being filled by students who are in close proximity, right? So if that is our goal, then this would be the scenario that fulfilled that goal. And again, we still have the, the same kind of demographic breakdown as well that we can do. And then we could run the scenario again if we wanted to do both and see what the impacts of, if we had the ability to invest in both, we could do that.
I just saw one piece that I was curious about. In the other scenario, there were no new black students served.
Sorry, Chair Robinson. Chair, could you please come to the microphone?
No, my question was in the first scenario, there were no new black students served even though the school was much larger. And now in this one, with the school half the size, there are black students served. Is that because of the proximity of where they live?
Yes.
To the school?
Correct.
There you go.
Okay.
With this one, do you want people to stay here or go back?
They can go back. Thank you so much for engaging with us through the rubric demo and look forward to getting all of your feedbacks and thoughts. As part, as part of the Green New Deal for BPS launched last year, we committed to building a new pre-K through six school on the site of the former Jackson Mann campus in Alston. One of the things I shared on a previous slide is that the Jackson Mann campus and the Horace Mann is not a part of the rubric tool and the reason why, because there's always, there's currently a proposed investment for that building. We hope to begin the design of this campus early next year, but we will have to decide what school or schools in the neighborhood will move into a brand-new campus. So this is where the rubric comes in to make the decision. To do this, we might look at school buildings that currently cannot support a high-quality student experience and have limited space to support a building model in the future, even with a major capital investment. These are the schools, these are the schools that will be considered to move into the new building. Early next year, with the decision-making tool in place, we will have the opportunity to bring all of the Alston-Brighton elementary school communities together to walk through the data, understand future possibilities, and ground ourselves in what option or options would move us closer to our goal of all students and families having access to buildings that support a high-quality student experience close to home. To be clear tonight, we are not making any decisions, but just exploring the rubric. And again, we understand these decisions are more complex, but for the sake of tonight, what building model, but for the sake of tonight, we shared building models that we can choose for the new building. And using the largest building model feasibility data, that schools might be transitioned into the new building.
So to look at this, can you all actually see this data? I think we might have.
Make it a little bigger.
Yep, and if we, if we look specifically at, there you go, the school building capacity. So you, what you can see in B is that there are three schools in Alston-Brighton, Baldwin, Lion, and Winship, that have no feasible model. What that means is that those three different building models that we looked at earlier, the reconfiguration, or sorry, the renovation, the renovation with addition or a new build, those can actually happen on, in those buildings or on those sites. And so what we can then do is look at the school building capacity, which is C, to see what the capacity of those schools is currently and then also the student enrollment currently. And so when thinking about a new build in an area, we can then consider what are the buildings that actually transition into a new building? And so there's both the, the Jackson Mann site, what size is that building? And then it's also taking into account who are the kids or what schools are they coming from that then transition into that space?
Just to clarify, does it then flag demand data? Like, like the demand for a school, because then you, does that make sense what I'm saying? It's not just like who the kids are, but like where are families, where do families want to be?
Yeah.
Versus where are families just placed? It's a very different, I don't know if the, if the system allows for that type of flag, that's a different.
Yeah, no, it, it doesn't at this time, but we should definitely mark that down and think about it. What we can see though is we can see capacity versus enrollment. And we can see that there are certain buildings that are under-enrolled. Now, obviously, we'd have to look at more factors of why that's happening. And we can also look at buildings that are currently over-enrolled.
We can also see waitlist.
Yes, yeah.
And that would probably be the driver, I mean, because.
Because I think to remember Cadet Hernandez's point, if a, a school could be fully enrolled because half of it is programmed. And so the waitlist actually is a good driving factor in understanding the choice of the families.
Yeah, that's a great point. And that also contributes to thinking about what are the pieces of data and evidence outside of the Rubrik that you take in to actually get the texture of what's happening in the district to make informed decisions and investments. And so knowing this, knowing that there are some buildings that cannot support a model program and even with investment, I mean, obviously, there's more analysis, but they, putting investment in there is not going to create, you know, the large school. It then helps us think about which schools do you then possibly transition in?
So may I ask a quick, Madam Chair, may I ask a quick question? Exactly on that point, how was the decision made whether a particular building could support it? So I look at, for example, the Lion K to eight, which really one building is K to six. Seven and eight is across the street at the high school building. It's always been strange to me that we've done it that way where the school leadership runs two building for K to eight. But how is a decision made that, I'm going to say the Lion K to six, not Lion K to eight, because that building could not support, no, support a K to six, but could support at, at the program size that you want? I would think, being somewhat familiar with it, it would be something that could be renovated and potentially expanded. So how, how is that decision? And, and this is where some, and I ask this just as an example, because I could see community feedback being whoa, 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 our building could of course support that. You could go up, you could go in the back, you could do this, you could do that. I would anticipate we would get voluminous response that way of how was that decision made? Because that, and, and I'm just using this as one example, appears to me to be a decision that people would really question.
Yep. So one of the sections of the education specifications goes through every single space that would be needed to support the high-quality student experience as guided both, really guided by collective community. And by that, I mean the wider community in addition to all of the community of BPS and city. And so we can actually see what are the physical spaces that would be needed in order to support that type of educational experience. Then you can look at square footage and see, does that site allow it? Both in the current building, in that building with a renovation, and then in a new build. And those new builds have to be, the site has to be large enough. And one of the key components of that also, and this was raised across all demographic groups during the community listening sessions, is the need for outdoor space. And so when you think about a new build on a site, it also takes into account the outdoor space. And so then you can look at, you know, the sites that did not support one. That means that their current building cannot fit all of those spaces that we're talking about, the square footage, and their site also cannot. And so then you can identify which school buildings can actually support all of those physical spaces.
So, but just help me out with that. Does that say we'll put a max on height as an example? You know, because we will have parents say, well, if you went up two stories, you could easily add more classrooms and then we'd still have the outdoor space that we have.
Yeah. It's, so actually, in, in talking with the, the team and PFD and others, you could do a multiple site. And so when we say it's not feasible but with further analysis, you could potentially look at, you know, what happens if we build a four, five-story building? Because some of our, our buildings and their footprints are quite small. But then you can also take into account the kids that it's reaching, the investment. So how much would that cost versus another site that already has the outdoor space? Then the, the factors that Superintendent Skipper was talking about. We can think about all of those surrounding pieces and not just if we build, you know, a really tall building, can we then fit it? We can make informed decisions.
My point is just that when you have some schools that just won't support a model, I think that's an area we can anticipate a lot of intense questioning on.
Yeah, that's fair. And the language on the slide was a bit shorter. What it actually says is cannot support without further analysis. And so there could be further analysis. But what it also shows is the seventy-one buildings that with the current analysis show that it can fit some type of building model.
Thank you.
I actually have a question just like with this. And we've, we've actually spoken about this in terms of community engagement with the process. And so we've talked a lot about equity being represented as understanding like power differentials and sort of where do community members actually have power in the process? And how are they involved in the decision-making? I think we heard it from a couple of people earlier tonight, just really thinking about how are families going to know where their voice holds weight in deciding what are the next buildings to be renovated or completely built?
Yeah. With that question, I think it actually is a nice segue into looking at a timeline. And then we can talk specifically about, that way you can see pieces and we can talk about the community engagement within it.
Can I add to that question? Thank you for the demo, by the way. I was very impressed and I think that's something that other departments in the city should consider when they're thinking about making decisions on how to allocate services to constituents. So I'm very impressed and also my brain is like, that's a lot of information. So I'm glad that you all were able to really help us visualize that. My, to add to the question in terms of like the community engagement piece, I know we've heard in the room and just in general of like, who is making these decisions? I think just to be informative and educating folks, especially if we have families that just don't know what BPS is or what, how the school committee functions, I think it would be helpful that, that question is answered. So everybody knows, yes, this is the role of the school committee members, this is the role of parents, this is the role of DELL, this is the role of superintendent. I think that just really, maybe it takes a little bit of that insecurity that folks are having or the fatigue of like, it's going to happen and we don't know how it's going to happen. And I'm sure we've, we've probably answered that question in the past, but I think the same way that we sort of had the demolition of how the Rubrik would work, I think it just, I just thought about like, oh, maybe the next presentation or whatever you all can follow up with is really showing that roadmap, that shared governance that we all in some way have, just to clarify that. Because there's people that really don't know. I, from my understanding, we've had a couple of presentations, you've came back with updates, you gave us answers to things that you didn't give before, whatever that is. So it's, it still feels like it's a continued conversation, but I can understand the frustration because it's just coming from years of years of years of waiting and we finally have a team that's working on it. So that's not a question, more of a feedback, but it would be really good to make that clear to the community and even us of how that would function. Especially, I know we have a role in it, but I just want to know how everybody else is playing that.
Yeah, no, that's fair. And I think the two timelines that we'll finish out with, we'll start that conversation and then know that it will be continued because this is a really important part of it and, and a part that's continuing to be refined.
Rebecca, I would also just say that the, the criteria, right, that is informed in the tool is coming from the community, right? It is, it is not a BPS created, it's not a school committee created. It's coming from nine thousand surveys, you know, so many different opportunities for the community to weigh in and students about, and staff about what they want for the student experience. That's the rules base behind this. So I think that's just really important because that's a first step that in the past, we would have skipped. And I think, you know, I can't say enough of the team for making sure that the, like surveys, for instance, were fully representative of BPS demographic and sizable. Like I can't think of another time we had a survey where we had nine thousand results. So that's kind of the entree in, which if you didn't have that, it's flawed from the start. And, and now I think we build on that, which is in the use of it and then in the recommendations of it, what happens next.
Yeah, that's, thank you for that. And, you know, part of when we've been out at, at community meetings, being able to show that experiences can be translated into metrics, sometimes is a tough leap to make. But as you said Superintendent Skipper, every single one of these metrics is actually grounded in what people shared as an important part of what we want for our kids. And, you know, another thing that we heard throughout the community process and this process as a whole is the ask for more transparency behind capital planning decision-making and a timeline for how these decisions will be made. So what we share with you tonight is a draft timeline because we would love and to receive your thoughts on what an annual cycle could look like. So decisions to close, merge, reconfigure, renovate, or build new schools are extremely complex as we've talked about tonight. And our responsibility as policymakers is to make decisions that benefit the entire district as an ecosystem. While students, families, and educators will continue to have influence, we want to be clear that the decisions are ultimately the superintendents to recommend to this body. And sometimes it can feel like whoever mobilizes the strongest or advocates the loudest has the chance to sway decisions. We believe this dynamic ultimately reinforces inequities that benefit the loudest and more, most powerful voices in the room. Our hope is that this Rubrik, the transparent data behind it, and a predictable annual cycle will begin to shift this dynamic. By developing a clear process, we can be clear about where community members have influence and to be transparent about why decisions are being made, even when folks may disagree. This Rubrik will help school committee and our collective community hold us accountable to making decisions grounded in evidence that center the best interest of students, families, and our district as an ecosystem of schools. So we want to walk you through a draft timeline. And the first will be on mergers and closures and the second will take a look at new builds and renovations.
The timeline that you've seen on the screen is what we've heard clearly from community members, the desire for predictability. We're laying out a draft annual timeline to show you how this process would work, what are the key milestones, and what are the opportunities for community members to influence throughout? This is a place where we love to hear your feedback. We plan to come back to you with a more detailed timeline as part of a broader capital planning policy. On the timeline you see sketched out here, we'll spend the fall, winter, and into the spring to develop a short list of proposals for the following year. This will involve bringing the Rubrik out to community, sharing the data so that we can build a shared understanding of our schools, neighborhoods, and district. We'll use the Rubrik to develop a short list of proposals. In the spring, we'll present a short list of proposals to the school committee. Go back to individual school communities to hear feedback and then bring the proposals forward for a vote. This may not happen every year, but when there are mergers or closures, there'll be a full school year of transition planning, mapping out the supports for students, families, and staff for the following school year. The Rubrik is a tool for community engagement, which will happen at every stage of this process. The Rubrik allows members of the public to see the same data we're seeing, have a sense of possibilities and trade-offs, and understand why proposals are being made. This annual cycle will give some predictability to schools and community members. We consider this next year a learning year as we apply the Rubrik for the first time. We are excited to continue learning from the public and strengthening the ways we bring our community members into this process.
So I think using this as a foundation, Dr. Alkins, we can revisit your question about community engagement. Emmanuel, if you don't mind going back a slide? So this one on mergers and closures, important to note that merger and closure votes come to this body. And so while we've got the band of community engagement throughout, the type of ways for people to both engage, influence, and in part, there are, will be spaces for decision-making will shift throughout. So the hope is, you know, the sessions that we just did last week can actually be a foundation for how we engage people in understanding the Rubrik and their particular region. And then to give another example, you know, if, so the, the proposal then comes to this body to vote on. If a proposal for a merger or a closure is approved, then communities start to transition into the process where we have the subcommittees, where they can think about how those either communities are joined together or they transition. That type of engagement and influence will look different than the proposals for the original schools. So all of these pieces need to be developed out and the rep engagement, where it goes from inform to empower, it will, will have to inform throughout, but that can then lead to, through the collaboration and in some places to the empower. And then in the next slide, this is showing new builds and renovations. New builds and renovations are part of the city budget and they are voted on by, or sorry, part of the capital plan for the city. And these votes go to city council. And so you can see that this process both is three-year because it goes through design and construction. And these votes are in a different governing body. And so as decisions are made that they complement each other, they'll sit in different spaces.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think something behind that is also just, and maybe that's just something for, for this body to think about, it just, that, that developing short list of proposals, you know, like when we're sitting in a, like how do we know if a community overwhelmingly wants to reject a proposal? And how do we handle that as, as a committee? I mean, yeah.
Are we, are we in question? Can we just, where did it go?
Yeah, we're in question.
All right, God bless.
One, I guess, one thank you so much, right, for the time and trying to do a really complex presentation in a different way. I appreciate it. And I also just like appreciate questions in the middle. Like sometimes we sit through these like hour-long presentations and it, you know, I like this, sort of like breaking it apart in a different way. I guess I, if you could see my notes right now, Lord, it's just, it's like nine o'clock notes. I guess I have a few questions. The first piece for me, and I think it goes to the question about the short list. We've been having conversations, predates you Superintendent, of like the master facilities plan. I think like the SIP asked for one by December. This is not a master's facility plan. This is like a good tool to use for planning. But we don't have a master facilities plan. The, what my fear is, is like what is our long game in a system where we know we're losing, I don't know, a hundred and thirty million dollars in SIR funds? We are experiencing shrinking enrollment? Like, what's the long game? Every time we do these sort of like batch proposals, it's so disori- and, like it's so disorienting for people. disorienting for people, it's so disorganizing for the system, and part of that is because like no one knows where we're going, like, what is the scale we're looking to achieve and what will that look like? And like, given this tool, I guess two things, I will land a question here, given the tool, you know, I, we're still doing this, it's like business as usual, just with an added layer, like, and, and maybe even like analysis paralysis or something, right? Like, there's just another added layer to still doing small batch decision-making, and given this tool, why wouldn't we do something more masterful or strategic, where we're like, actually, we could, with this tool, we could scope out the whole system? We may not have the money to, to do that work, but we could be transparent with communities that over the next ten years, this is our plan with money from the city or the state coming in to help realize it. But, like, what's stopping us from doing the thing that everyone is asking us to do? Why continue to do it piecemeal without that clear denominator of like, this is where we're going, this is what we have to achieve?
I can take it.
Okay. All three of us are like moving towards the mic.
So, I, I guess what I would say is, um, one of the, one of the things that's sort of been the barrier, I think, to having a law, a future-looking plan, when it comes to facilities, is that we haven't had the information we need to make it, and we haven't had a way to apply it. And I think what the team has done is to actually provide those key pieces. We can accelerate that in terms of an actual, um, ten-year-facing, fifteen-year-facing plan. I think, right now, because what we heard like really clearly, and I think those that of us that have been part of the system when proposals have been put through for mergers or closures, um, before, is that because it's not, it hasn't been grounded in anything, um, and because the community has just been kind of presented, here's the informa- here's what it is, um, it never goes anywhere. And so, to get beyond that, you have to both have what it is you need, and you have to invite the community into that, so that they're looking at it in the same way, and both of those things take some time. I think the, with the SIP, we have been updating the Department of Ed on where we are with this and what they will get for December thirty-first, um, understanding that it was unrealistic to sign a SIP and then say we were gonna magically have a master plan that hasn't existed in this district ever, um, in whatever amount of time that was. Um, however, I think they, I think everyone can see the seriousness by which we are approaching that, with now the tools and the data to be able to have those conversations by regions in the communities. So, the answer is yes, we are going to get to a long-term facilities plan, but we need to bring the community into this part to do it. You know, and that does mean that we will put forward recommendations based on data that is in the tool and available, um, and we can do that in an accelerated fashion, but the money has to be staged and found. Enrollment will shift too, and so, I think even in a long-term plan, you have to have ways to continue to check, to make sure that what you predicted three years ago is holding true tomorrow. Um, so, that, that is the next step to this. I think in this first year, because of our goal of getting the rubric, um, presented to you and to the community, and then to have it voted upon, if favorable, now we have something for which we can now apply something that will allow some changes for next year. For the future years, um, when we come to actual closure and consolidation, um, and giving the community some timeline, I think that's where we can then start to move faster, um, you know, as it sounds like school committee wants us to, um, but the key is that the community needs to be able to see exactly what we're basing those recommendations on.
And I, I, I hope that the question didn't make it seem like I didn't appreciate that, like, I think that level of data, and I, and I hear the openness too, to being like, what else is missing here, right? Like, demand data, or, you know, our own analysis of quality, there are certain schools we want to grow because they are fantastic, right? And we had a leader here tonight, like, right, the sort of perfect example of the type of place that we want to see shepherd more students if the building would allow for it. The, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking, then, I, am I thinking of this right, if I think year one is a response to two things, right? The need for data to make stronger, more thoughtful analysis around decision-making and to have a level of transparency, but also a response to ESSR and the shift that we're having as we will no longer have the same ability to hold schools harmless, and so, like, that has to inform whatever year-one school closures, mergers, consolidations we're proposing, but as we move into year two, we have then a tool to build a forward-looking, long-term plan-
Yes.
-so that we are no longer going out with batches of schools that are being merged or closed, or having their grades consolidated, we can give people a look into what the plan is with the recognition that like, things may adjust, right? Like, things could adjust, but here is the plan for the number of buildings we think it will take to run this system, the number of new buildings we think aren't viable options, and the, the fifteen years of construction it will take to build them, right? Like, all of that information in one place, so we're not always sort of managing the why-me in relationship, not just to like this data, but to like the greater context of the system.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's right, I think you can then accelerate it. It, you know, it's, it's really in this first year of kind of getting this piece right, inviting people into it, so people understand it, and they can look at the same analysis we do, and then from that, making recommendations in a more rapid fashion.
Then, the only thing I will propose is that slide twenty-nine, or whatever slide we're on, has that timeline.
Sure.
Has the timeline for what we're doing now, and then the timeline that we are actually publicly saying we will have a master's facility plan, no longer using, everyone having a different version of what a master's facilities plan is, right? Like, to really talk about the full footprint of the system in a coherent way, and what's the delivery, given the development of this tool, of that type of framework, and I, obviously you don't need the answer now, but that's the slide that's missing for me.
Yeah. I mean, the slide that's missing for me is also like the guaranteed funding in being able to do all of that, right?
But it allows us to have something to organize around too, right? It allows, if communities are excited about a new building, and I get the political implications of this, but it gives people something to work towards, it gives-
Yeah.
-city council something to have sink their teeth into, it's not just special project by special project, it is not how business is done in this town, but it might actually be good for people to have something to work towards.
I think like, I think also, um, I'll give you like a, just a simple for instance, so, um, MSBA's acceleration program, right, like with the repairs for roofs and, you know, um, big-ticket items, um, with the FCA, we actually have all that data now. So, we can actually like really, as we overlay this, kind of tell like which building should we put forward for those big-ticket envelope items. We never had that, right? So, some of this was just really just getting, um, our act together is not the right word, but that's what comes to mind, but, you know, it's just basically getting things together so that you have the right data to function off of, and I, I think that's right. I also think some of this is cyclic, and I think, you know, what, what, um, what the team is talking about too, is when you have a closure, what are the steps you need to take for that closure, because the closure is about people, not the building. And so, you have to, you have to have on-ramp and off-ramp for that community, for that community to have options, right? The other is, as we think about new builds, some of those new builds may be through MSBA, we won't necessarily know whether we'll get the funding through them. So, when we make an announcement, that's great, like, we'll say we want to do a new build, um, you know, in this area of the city, um, but in order to then enact what we, the, the closures and the mergers, you have to have a new build. So, this is like one of those things, it's, it's sort of like, will let you see clear to a certain degree, like distance, but then as you go a few years out, it's going to get a little less clear.
Is there a disadvantage of thinking of MSBA funding as a way to accelerate the process of a master plan? So, instead of being like, we will count on this in order to do it-
Yeah.
-it's, we're doing this with the funding that currently exists, and a timeline that then's re- is realistic, and if MSBA money comes in, then you can accelerate parts of the plan, like, it becomes a tr- of funding trigger for moving faster, not a dependency on movement?
Yeah, I mean, ten buildings in forty years-
Yeah.
-is reliant predominantly on MSBA funding, and so, I think to your point, that can be like the gasoline on the fire and accelerate, but you still need the fire, and so, I think that's why, you know, the, the, I think that's why the Green New Deal and the mayor's commitment, um, you know, of, of two billion dollars as the floor is so important. Um, but it's also why we have to leverage the buildings that we know can fit these spaces. We can build any building, you know, or we shouldn't, I shouldn't say that, but say there's a building you can build up that doesn't fit a model program, that could be a consideration, but if you have a building in that region that already has that capacity, our dollars need to go toward readying that building, right? And I think that's what the data like will show, right, for the community.
Yeah, that it's not about just new things, and that makes sense, right? Like, the conversation that everything has to be new is unfair, like, I loved your opening, but, you know, you go to Europe and it's, the buildings are-
Yeah.
-aren't older than ours, and they're not knocking down buildings the way we do to build new ones, right? Like, you're working-
I live in an eighteen forty-four farmhouse, and I love it, um, but, you know, yet, you have to do a lot to it, right? And so, it's, I, I think that's the thing, there's gonna be these trade-offs with the building and what the bill, what's possible, and I think the regional areas, as you play with the tool, one of the things that just really fascinated me is that it shows how even in our regions of the city, you see ves- investment and divestment. And I think, for me, because I, when I'm looking at any of this, I'm always thinking about who are the kids behind it? I find the student data the most fascinating, as you play.
If I can, uh- Can I jump in for just a moment? Um, the Shaw Taylor really is an example of what you're talking about, we're up for MSBA, um, and, uh, but if it doesn't come through, and we're gonna knock on everything, we will still have an elementary school in that area. And even if we're being thoughtful about the proposals that are being put forward, um, what's different is this is an ecosystem view, so those aren't independent proposals, even if it is joining certain school communities, it is in service of something larger. So, like, if we go back and, and think about the Shaw Taylor again, um, bringing them together makes it so that there are the physical spaces that can actually support things like inclusive education, and now we've brought together a school community that's now ready to transition into the new building. So, these are future-facing decisions with an ecosystem lens, and now it's putting them together across the city.
I just wanted to add more on the MSBA, feeling very triggered of all the city council hearings that I tried to schedule when I was the mayor's liaison for the city council, and that's just to point out, like, as much as we can count on the state, federal funding, a lot of their processes or requirements or timeline can often delay the district to actually move forward, and that in- that includes just having a city council hearing and having the district come and present to the council, because the council also has to approve these dollars, um, and as you can imagine, there's a lot going on in the city, a lot of hearings, sometimes it's completely scheduled, if you're trying to do something during budget season where ways and means has completely took over, the chamber's schedule is really, really hard, and we've often seen the district actually like, almost losing their opportunity to actually, uh, uh, submit the form of interest or applying for them. So, also having to rely on other entities for us to get to the work, um, definitely presents barriers, and those are some of the things that not only the, is good the committee knows, but also is good to like be transparent with the, with the public, right? It's not just a step one, step two, step three, sometimes from step one to step three, there's so many things that needs to happen that is not even the district's control. Um, and that, you mentioned it, I literally just remember how hard it would be we got it done, but it was definitely like something that could have potentially like put a lot of projects in, at risk.
So, I mean, my question would be then, how are we defining, like, what the end goal is? Are we saying that every school in the district has a feasible program? Uh, i- is that how we're defining, like, what our, what our end target is? And can our tool then predict, or at least estimate what the timeline would be for each of those either renovations or new buildings? Can it even project out something like that? Um, and I don't, I mean, you probably could, but I, I'm not sure that, even then, that it's reliable, like, so, yeah, I guess two questions, like, how are we defining what the, what that end goal is? Like, and then can our tool measure a timeline?
The tool does not, um, measure time, um, it helps to, um, make evidence-based, um, decisions and investments, um, so timeline, I mean, in part is set by what we know about design and construction and other pieces, um, but, um, I think the first part of your question was-
So, if, if we have a hundred and nineteen schools, and we define the end goal as all of those being able to produce high-quality school programming, so, and then according to the assessment, seventy-one s- schools are able to do that, forty-one, so basically, are we saying that the end goal is to make those other forty programs, like, what it would take to essentially renovate those forty programs? Is that our end goal?
The, the end goal, and I'll say this and then, um, is, uh, that, uh, every student in Boston Public Schools is in a high-quality, um, seat, and remember that this in particular is investing in the physical spaces to support that.
For sure.
Um, and so, o- obviously, a lot of other factors go into that. Um, and so, what the tool then helps us do is figure out how we create those high-quality student seats through the facilities, and being thoughtful about, um, where we create them and when to then make it so those buildings are actualized. The seventy-one and the forty-eight, the, the seventy-one are the buildings that could, uh, support a building model, so that tells us that with investment, they can meet, uh, one of those, um, models that we showed. The other forty-eight, um, cannot without further analysis, and so then we need to think about what we do with, uh, both the investments in the seventy-one-
Yeah.
-as well as how we, um, are thoughtful about the, the forty-eight, and that can take, you know, different, um, different shapes, including the, um, you know, mergers of multiple campuses, in the interim, um, closures, um, but we're thoughtful about where we, where we place the investment.
Yeah, I think I was, yeah, referring to the forty-eight as sort of the, more or less like the limiting reagent, um, more or less in that decision, um, so, no, that's helpful, that's helpful.
And always encourage a chemistry analogy.
So, um, thank you for the presentation tonight, I think of this as a yes and, so to speak, so, this is a really cool tool, it's, um, it allows decision-making based on data and based on student-focused, it's a tool we have never had before, so, so many times we've had presentations, this body of one-off, one-off, well, this is what we need to do, don't worry, we're gonna do that, and, um, we chafe at that, and the public chafes at that, and so, now this is a tool, and it's a process, it's a, but, and I'm saying yes and, and it's a piece of the puzzle, it's not the final puzzle. I agree completely with Member Cardette Hernandez about this, there's like a whole other track that needs to be going on, and I'm sure it is, but it's not part of this about, so what's our capacity right now? What's the school-age capacity in the city? What percent do we have? You know, examples from other districts tell you that, you know, they talked about in the Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. If we have school buildings, so that all of our students can be in high-quality seats, parents are gonna choose that, right? So, districts that have invested a lot in their buildings and built them, Cincinnati, um, Baltimore, and others, tell you that when they build them, parents see the buildings actually going up, then they choose, and they come back to the district. So, hearing what the, what the plan is on this side of how many school-age children, what do we have now, what's the capacity if we do this, does the seventy-one buildings equal the capacity that we have now, or the capacity- Or the capacity we hope we would grow to if more come? Or if forty are not feasible for the high-quality student experience, does that mean we have to find twenty other sites to be able to build something? It's, I don't want people saying, looking at this and thinking, oh, okay, well, this means we're gonna have seventy-one buildings and we're gonna close forty. Right? Because, and, and I didn't mean you, Dr. Alkens, I'm talking about, I happened to glance in your direction. I'm thinking the general public, how this is interpreted. So we need that master look too. And is this three years, is this five years, is it ten years, is it fifteen years? The other piece of advice I have is we should be leading with the builds. This city, this district does not have the trust factor with our public to be able to say, we're gonna close, we're gonna merge, but don't worry, we're gonna build you something new. And as we talked about even earlier today, I think this committee struggles with the trust factor, let alone our greater public. And yet, the experience from other cities is when parents and community members see buildings going up, that's when they start to believe. And there should be just as much focus on that. And how are we gonna fill the new buildings? Well, yeah, then maybe we merge some smaller ones that are not gonna be able to have those high-quality learning experiences. And parents are gonna want their child in a building that has all those other things. And the learning programs that Mr. Cardette Hernandez talked about, right? Because we have some great programs going on in lousy buildings. Looking at you, Mr. King. We'd love to have you and a, a binker in a, in a beautiful building, so, and have a soccer field for your students that they deserve. Sorry to get sidetracked there. And, and the last piece is, this is just a tool. And yet, when we start to apply it is when the rubber hits the road. And I think back to this committee's work about start times. Everyone agreed with us theoretically until parents saw start times proposed for their school. And then there was a lot of concern, I will put that very mildly. And so, rubrics are great, but it's how that next step becomes so critical. And what I love is, in my mind, this is an equity-based tool and we get to, it's data, it's real, it's fair. People are gonna push at it, expect that, particularly about, well, what do you mean, my building can't be renovated, as we talked about a little bit earlier. But this has given us more tools to have that conversation than we've been able to have in the past, which has just been the district saying, trust me. But it, it's going to get real when folks start to dig into this and see what, put their school in. Because remember, everyone hates, it's like Congress. Everyone loves their congressperson and hates Congress. Everyone loves their school and doesn't like the district. Everyone loves their classroom, loves their teacher, right? So, um, we're gonna have some work to do to have folks understand what the next steps of the process will be and how this fits in with a master one. And I circle back to what Mr. Cardette Hernandez asked as well about, you know, and we've had a number of people saying public comment tonight. We had a promise to Desi that we'll have a master facilities plan by December thirty-first. Is Desi going to see this as a step in the right direction? Which I hope they do, because to me, this is a phenomenal tool and a tremendous amount of work that has never been done before. And I can, again, congratulate all of you on this. But superintendent, how, how are they gonna?
So we've been updating, it's a great question. We've been updating the Department of Ed, we have regular meetings with them and we've been updating them at each step of the way as to the pieces of this. And so, they are very clear that for the thirty-first, this is what we've been talking about.
So there won't be any like penalties, like?
No, there's been no indication of that. Like, they, they understand the magnitude of the work. I mean, I can't imagine in what world we could have had an entire master plan with a SIP that was signed and.
No, I agree. I think it's just good for the public to understand.
But no, we have.
What is the?
No, we have had, we've had, um, we've had, you know, very concrete conversations about each piece as well. Um, and I, you know, I think, I think, uh, much like you have all indicated, right? Like, there, you can see how much hard work has gone into this and work with the community, right? Like, that's why it's at the point that it's at, is because it's based on what the community has said they would like for their students. And that all just takes time and a lot of process and gathering data. So, I think, um, I think, you know, the now moving forward and being able to apply it and being able to have the community in the different regions see how we're applying it and for them to be able to do it, that now is, takes on an applied learning that we've just never had the opportunity to do with the community.
Uh, Chair Robinson, may I have the floor for, for a little time? Well, anyway, um, I've been quiet for the entire evening. And I've listened to many comments and many opinions, suggestions and concerns regarding your, your, your rubric and, and the kind of gizmo that you're giving us today. And I believe that it is also for, for, for the public. And I strongly believe, first of all, I thank you for your presentation and, and for your thoughtful in putting together this, uh, program that is not only available to, to the school people, but also to the public. I believe that the public has, as the superintendent said, had really had input in developing this by the nine thousand or so opinions that pretty much cultivated in that kind of thing. So, uh, thank you. And I hear, I hear a lot of concerns, I hear a lot of far-out concerns. Some concerns that are near, some concerns that are far. I'm of the opinion that, um, as long as you put together a really, really practical and equitable tool, I'm not going to be concerned about the trust. I know that we have been dealing with the trust, the public trust, but I'm not going to be concerned about that. I think everybody here is for the, you know, the best interest of the, the students, of course. Like Rebecca mentioned, sometimes people who, people who yell the loudest may have the, the floor. I don't believe it. And I hope that will not be the case in, in this one. M, M, MSP, MSPA or not, or whatever kind of, of, um, funding we have, will not, I believe, will not influence what you guys are doing. And of course, as I said, I'd be here to support, trust or not, I'll take it. Come on down, I'll take the trust. Thank you.
Next up, another question.
Okay.
Because I'm trying to figure out two things. I guess as we get ready to submit in December to the state, I can imagine a universe where they're like, well, when is there a master's facilities plan? As I was asking about a, a more transparent timeline of like how this tool will be applied in building a master's facilities plan, has that been something talked about internally? Like, is there, is that, it can't be new news, like, is that part of the goal for us as a system? And if so, when, it, when does that currently fit logically into our plan?
Right, so we, certainly we know that that is a goal, right? We, we want that as well. Um, we have not talked about at what point that would be produced or even in draft. Um, I do think that, you know, much like with capital planning, it's usually a five-year out. Um, when you go beyond that, it becomes questionable like what you can get. But I think our goal would be to do up to the five-year, right? To sort of see like this is what it's gonna look like. And you can ima, like, as you know, like, in the five-year, if you're saying in year two, these are gonna be the, the buildings that are gonna be consolidated or merged, that in and of itself has a life cycle. And then year three has a life cycle that goes beyond that, right? So, I, I think that would be like our next step. But right now, the lift to get to here has been heavy. And I think, I think the feedback and then applying it and using it in the first set with the spring, that's gonna be like our refine, that's gonna be like our opportunity to say, how does this work? What do we learn as we bring those recommendations to you? And then, and then we can actually start to really kind of, I think, push it forward. Um, so I would be very hesitant, you know, to, to say tonight, uh, you know, we're gonna have a, we're gonna, we're gonna have an applied, long-term plan by such and such. But that will be part of the conversations with the city and with our team, you know, in the coming months.
Yeah, I think it, I'll end here, because maybe that's just sort of like, that's the end. It's hard, I think it'll remain difficult for us to continue to have conversations about mergers and consolidations outside of a plan. And it hasn't stopped the body before. But it, given the pressure to have a plan, like, it will just be very difficult. It will be very difficult for us to go into another year. And again, this, some of this predates you of having the last superintendent tell us there was gonna be a master's facilities plan and that those proposals were the last proposals we were gonna talk about without a master's facilities plan so that we could look community members in the eye when they came here and they're like, why my school? What puzzle piece does this fit into, into a puzzle? And to just say like, don't worry, the, what, the puzzle's coming. The decision was made with good thinking and analysis, which is real. But like, we're still not showing anyone what the puzzle is. What size, what does it mean, what are we trying to get to? And I respect that you can't answer that, but I, you know, as a member, it's like, it puts us in a harder place.
Yeah.
Going into.
I do think by the spring though, we will be able to give a sense of the overall system of what we're looking for in terms of, um, optimizing the system for X number of students, right? Like, I think that's very feasible.
Good, I thought we were, I wasn't telling you I needed a master facilities plan by December, but like,
Yeah.
it will be hard to go into those conversations without that clarity.
Yeah, that's right. And I think the reason why the regional piece is like important to look at is that you have some regions where you have lots of opportunities, right? With the buildings, um, but you don't have the school population. And so, if we're thinking about kind of close to home, that mile, um, and then when you apply it at the high school level, it's really different, right? Like, if what we want is quality options of high schools in local neighborhoods, which sounds great, right? The high schools probably are the most complex because of the amount of empty seats, right? That, that is like just a driving force there. So, um, I think that it's, it's one of those things like you can't, you have to look at the whole picture in totality. But how to phase that becomes tricky, right? Like, which regions to approach first? Which ones do we believe like we can pull forward in this way to get a, say, a new build? Which can we afford to do with these conversions? That's why it's like very inter, it's very integrated with our city, our city budgets, right? Like, it's, it's all together. But I do think we can give the puzzle edges, right, come spring.
I like that, thank you.
I always do the edges of the puzzle first.
Oh, same.
And then do the middle puzzles.
Same. The middle's the hard part.
Right.
Thank you.
I just have one quick question. Again, thank you. I enjoyed last week being with you all as we began to explore the rubric and, and really saw the potential for it. One of the things, I know in this last couple of years, we've been really focusing on the regions, the nine regions. And I guess, knowing this district, we've had regions before, we've had all kinds of things. So, you know, will we, you know, can we put guardrails on some of these things so that, um, we won't be talking about a different configuration of groups of schools two years down the line and, and lose what we've got now? I mean, you know, it feels like they're nine mini-districts. But to be able to analyze and understand, you know, what's in each of these districts, in, in each of these regions and how to begin to even prioritize like we're doing tonight within a region, what might need? And then how do you take that and look at it across the whole city? So that you're balancing, you know, what's happening? Because again, trying to help families to understand, you know, how decisions will be ultimately made, but within the context of where, what is close to home for me and understanding, I have great need in my neighborhood, but there are other parts of the city too, and how do we get those balances? So, um, be excited to see the next steps in this. And I'm, I'm sitting here looking at notes I made in August at a meeting. And I still don't have the answers to these questions. Which says, what size district are we trying to develop?
Well, you have that one though, you have that one.
I know, now we do have the one about what size schools, the two and four. But I'm thinking, will we have one strand? Will there be threes, will there be fives? Well, you know, what will be the, the guardrails that say, these are the, these things, we will not do X, Y, or Z? Because I think the more we can begin to sort of shape the choices, it'll help people to be able to eliminate possibilities that really aren't possibilities, but to zoom in and understand the options and why they're important. So, just thank you. And, um, we will look, we look forward to hearing more about the next steps of getting to the master plan and to get some of the, the bigger questions sort of focused in as we work on the next pieces of this.
Chair, could I just ask for the team? What is helpful to you for, from the committee between now and December sixth? And then what are you, what are we planning as a team for December sixth?
The, the questions that you're asking and the pushes are really helpful. Being so deep in the weeds, being able to see outside perspectives and pushes like brings you out to then be thinking deeper. So, all of those are, are very helpful, including the continued push and thoughts about the community engagement process, the what is the puzzle that we're getting to? What does enrollment? Chair Robinson, welcome your August notes for December sixth. Uh, so after this meeting, we'll, um, send you all a memo that incorporates both what we learned and as we're moving towards the more refined timeline. And when we come back on the sixth, we, the, we should have this more granular than what it is now. And, um, you know, we'll be able to refine the tool as well so that we can think about those metrics and then we can get into some of the more specifics. Another key piece of this that we have, um, we've been wanting to make sure that school leaders um, see the pieces and are able to engage even in the interim. And so, that also, right, it'll, it will then allow us to continue to show more and dig in more and continue to push. And so, yeah, between now and, and December sixth, welcome all of that feedback.
Yeah, and I think one additional thing to add is, um, as we're getting all of that feedback and sort of like engaging our school leaders and taking, um, and just saying thank you for all of your thoughtful feedback tonight. And now to December sixth, just being thought partners and getting additional feedback as you guys get a copy of the memo. If you guys look over the deck, have any further like questions or even just wanna hold space to walk through the tool again with the capital planning team and the mayor's office and get more feedback to help us to refine our thinking as we think through. And, and it's trying to be just like really thoughtful, knowing that the decision-making tool will, um, sort of like, over the next couple of years and decades to come, this tool will impact children's lives across the city of Boston. So, the policy that we wanna bring before school committee, we wanna make sure that we're keeping that in mind. So getting all of the feedback, all of your feedback through this process, I think it's really, really, will be really helpful.
Thank you. Question, I know we did not. Question, I know we did not show them this evening, but at what point will school committee members be able to have access to some of the sheets that were used actually in the simulation? I know that they're not all public yet, but I really feel it'd be helpful for people to see the sheets and...
Yeah.
The sort of the assessments for school.
A couple of pieces. So I think that the, some of the sheets, the school sheets that were shared at the public meeting, we can share that information with school committee members. One of the piece that we're also just like combing through to make sure that like by region, that what we're putting out publicly, and that's like the data that's inputted in the tool. So right now, we're just like combing through to make sure that all of our data in the tool is accurate. So Emmanuel here, who's our data star, is actually combing through this tool. So that is also going to be public for the community and school committee to access as well. But the specific school sheets that you're speaking about, Jerry, happy to share those with committee members. And also, I think it would be helpful, like, as we're sharing the school sheets, to just like hold space and time for us to just like have like smaller conversations about like what they are. Because one of the things is as we were presenting the tools tonight, like, some of those pieces is represented in the school sheets. And I think it would be, I think it would help sort of like the dialogue.
And would be happy to do small groups or one-on-ones to actually work through. And some of the questions that you brought up, Dr. Alkins, we could put in different ways. You know, today, we we said, here's your desired outcome, but we could explore it in different ways and you can see the nuances. So happy to engage that way.
Thank you. Nothing else. Thank you, all three of you, for the work. And I know that there are more people behind the scenes that contributed to this. We thank you all for this and look forward to the next steps at our December 6th meeting.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to public comment.
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers for public comment.
Thank you. Any new business? That concludes our business for the evening. The next hybrid school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, December 6th, at 6:00 PM at the Boeing Building. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I guess so. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night and have a great Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Madam Chair.